My dog's waiting. You can't see me, you're not in the picture. You guys in the back, I gotta do it up. I can't see you all here so far back. Come on, guys. This is informal. We're here to learn. That's all here. You got the microphone? I'll be right there. Come on, guys, don't be shy.
This is a meeting table?
Uh, you can, uh, if you can sit here, you can. Just, uh, sit here.
Is it okay with your?
Yes. Yes, the only chair that would kinda get in the way of the shot is just that front one right there.
Alright, guys, let's get started. Uh, we're short one microphone, so, uh, respect that everybody needs to sort of pay attention to the speakers, though you still have a microphone, can't flare it out, so, number one, call this meeting, or there's a workshop slash strategy session slash whatever you wanna call it. It's for city council. You get to know you guys better, our staff, you guys know us better, it's more informal type occasion. It's for us to listen to some of the, I wanna hear about your requirements, I also wanna hear about your need, a desire, a request. This is the time, let us know about it. Can't think, so don't know about it, alright? Be gentle to us as we start. Even though I know we've got this morning and a couple months ago, seems like because of the election, the swearing-in, the cyber attack, the privacy and things. This is, to me, we're just now really getting started. So please give us some time to adapt our roles and educate us, and let us try to help you guys do a better job for the city. Uh, that's why we're here today, is just to learn, get to know each other better, and to discover what we can do to help Odessa. We like to share our ambitions, our goals, uh, as we go through the meeting. So it could be a long day, I apologize, but it's just the only way to get it done, is to get everybody together and get it done. If you don't mind, let's start with the prayer, and then we'll get started. Prayer with, dearly father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, your wisdom, and your support as we begin this workshop for the city of Odessa. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allowing us to appreciate one another as councilmen, and nurture the bonds of our community. Guide our hearts and minds in the spirit of fairness, and justice, right thought, and caring speech. Fill us with grace and humility, Lord, as we make decisions that affect our citizens, our employees, and the entire city of Odessa. We pray for wisdom as leaders of Odessa, as well as those in Austin, Washington DC, and around the world. We pray for unity in our community, and in our nation, and the entire world. We pray for peace in Ukraine and the Middle East. We pray for your loving grace to transform each of us into the person we're meant to be. We pray that we are ever mindful that all we do here today, and all that we accomplish, is in the pursuit of truth for the greater glory of your kingdom, and the service of humanity. Yes, all these things in Christ's name. Alright, guys, it's pretty informal, so there's no real set. We have an agenda, obviously, but it's gonna be a little bit, uh, really, you know, we have Lori Johnson here today. Lori, stand up, raise your hand. Lori is, uh, many years with the nonprofit management center of Odessa. She's recently retired after, I don't know, thirty plus years or longer. Uh, she'll tell you a little bit about herself. She's here to help facilitate us, that is, to keep us on track. Uh, 'cause I wanna sit and listen, I don't wanna be running, I wanna manage, but with respect, I want someone else to sort of help guide us all, pushes in the right direction. Uh, there's some times of it, obviously, uh, we can't go on forever. Uh, we'd like to, we'd like to spend more time with you, uh, but we don't also wanna be a hindrance to your work here. So we're trying to be respectful, uh, as we move through this agenda. Uh, at this time, I'm gonna turn over to Lori, to sort of help guide us in the right direction. Lori, stand up and turn around and introduce yourself to our five citizens and staff of Odessa.
Hi, I'm Lori Johnson, and this is Cal. As the mayor did mention, I am a former executive director of the nonprofit management center of the mayor's office. Over eighteen years, and before that, my career was in public relations and marketing, for twenty-seven years, so you can do the math to figure out how old I am, uh, very quickly. Uh, I am here to help facilitate the meeting, so realize that we wanna hear from everybody, and we want everybody to have a conversation. But my role here is gonna be helping to move us along, 'cause I do wanna get us out of here by three o'clock, and I think if I got us out of here by two forty-five, it means people will be extremely happy with you doing that, Lori. Uh, so just realize that we will be doing, I will be moving us along through the agenda. Uh, for the council members, I did put some little toy on the table, it's not because, I think, your children. It is because research shows that most adults are more attentive and more creative, they have something to do with their hands. And we've got seven hours ahead of us, so I wanna make sure that I keep, I keep going as much as possible. Uh, we'll also be bringing, including breaks throughout the day, uh, because I do know that that's something that's necessary. So with that, um, I will go ahead and move us into the next agenda item, which is the, uh, the staff, uh, introductions. And I will be calling you by, by department and name. I'm gonna sit down now, tell me, it's therapy and all that. Uh, and you will have five minutes, and Norma does have a timer, so. So first, it'll be the speaking managers, Lori, I'll be Peter Renal.
Good morning. I'm the mayor, also. So, I'm all up in the [inaudible]. I've been in municipal government thirty, thirty years. Twenty-eight of those years have been with the city of Odessa. Eighteen, I've been under finance, [inaudible]. And I was formerly the director of building and collection here, uh, in Lori. Last few years, I've been with the city of Odessa. Under my role, I have two departments that are, that I am in charge of, that I oversee. And those are municipal court, living in collection, that's, that's a little different, living collection. IT information technology, parks and recreation, which include rapid drainage tallpours and events. Community development, which includes [inaudible]. Development, planning, [inaudible]. Special projects, [inaudible]. Public works, which include engineering, street, [inaudible]. Utilities, which is a very good department. Includes laboratory services, water treatment plant, administration, wastewater collection, water distribution, and the [inaudible] water reclamation plant. Those are under my curfew. And after this meeting, the technique to the department heads, one of our greatest needs, of course, staffing. And our challenges that we face, of course, is our performance rate in this area. And with that, uh, we also face the compensation [inaudible]. Also hinders us at times because of the competition that we have for, for the resources, portion of things. Um, but we've been managing, I'm happy to say that we've got a great leadership crew of [inaudible] city of Odessa. And with that, I thank you for this opportunity. Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, how many years?
Uh, thirty.
Thirty years with the city?
Twenty years here, thirty years COVID.
And you started out?
No, sir, I was, uh, started off as the manager.
Okay, alright.
Oh, very good. Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Same show, we appreciate it. So you said you need staff, where is your greatest need? This is, this is the meeting that we can get right on the straight, so where's your greatest need to drive that?
Well, our greatest need really is, in entry-level positions, the, the one thing that hinders us is our entry-level pay. And, uh, because most entry-level employees can go out to the old field and double what we make here. Um, we, at one point, the city, I've been long enough, the city long enough, that benefit packages would also attract employees, and, you know, you could forebode low pay. I mean, when I started, I was making ten dollars a day since an hour, but we had a great benefit package, and other forms of good retirement. So, uh, but that has changed as well. Uh, and that has changed into the private sector, it's hot up and past this, in, in this aspect as well. So it's just not compensation, but the benefit package as well, it could help. It, it would help.
Did you call your up here? Yeah. A fair statement for the entire, every department?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. Um, once we have the ticketed employees, and as they, uh, as they move up and promote, uh, we tend to, to keep them. It's just maintaining those, the entry-level positions that are viable. Those are very vital to, to, to working with the city. And, um, and it's difficult, once you train them, and we start them off at sixteen dollars an hour, and, you know, we give an offer for nineteen, twenty dollars an hour with the same benefit package, not better. You know, it's almost a memory for, for their family. Um, they gotta feed their family, they gotta put food on the table. And, uh, that's really what holds that to the, that level. So, yes, sir.
You know, the [inaudible] position, you think, for sure?
Yes, I, I think we were budgeted at one point, uh, we were over a thousand fifty. And, um, the last number I heard, we were kind of, we're then up to nine hundred, so, um, we've scaled it back. We, we kind of were resolved to the fact that we work in the field positions, certain positions. So we started scaling back, moving, um, redistributing, uh, responsibility within the city. But, um, so, you know, maybe you have a fifty, two hundred position, and I, I don't know the exact number, but those are the last ones that I remember here.
And we're gonna be talking more about [inaudible].
Thank you, Mr. Renal.
Thank you, appreciate it very much, thank you.
Awesome.
I thank you for the benefits, and, uh, what they're, what they're repeating in this, so that we kind of have an idea of what we have to do. So that we, it was a conversation, even, so we know the topic, and, uh, we've got that, always a difficult city, but, uh, but, you know, with all the [inaudible] with that, with that, [inaudible]. And that, that's something to be, that seems to be the magic number of the [inaudible]. Yeah, and it's, uh, what we're willing to do, I'd be thankful for that.
Yeah, not a very much, not a, [inaudible] conversation, I think it's been [inaudible].
I'm not sure, the [inaudible] is not complete. There was a previous study, but, um, we'll be talking about the [inaudible] study after, after the next workshop. So we can [inaudible] number, uh, some, but great, sort of great question.
And there's gonna be a whole agenda item discussing staffing later this morning. Um, and I didn't mention, Lori, one reason that, that we decided that the council decided to have it, so there's, because you really wasn't mayor involved in the conversation, versus worrying about the procedure of the meeting. So that's where I stepped in to help with the meeting, so that the mayor can be engaged in the conversation throughout the day. So next up, we have building collection, uh, Joanne Pena.
Good morning, uh, Mayor and Council, Mr. Morton. Um, my name is Joanne Pena, I'm here in the place of [inaudible]. He is my director, he did have a higher [inaudible]. Um, building collection, our department, we're basically responsible for the building collecting, uh, [inaudible] services for water, sewer, waste collection, total. We also, we're about forty, um, thousand accounts, maybe, what it meant. Uh, we also manage the [inaudible] from other departments in the city of Odessa, uh, with the exception of municipal courts. Um, building collection, we're responsible for the building of the [inaudible]. We don't have receivable, we have the hotel motel tax, industrial [inaudible]. Uh, we issue [inaudible] services, uh, including vendor, food, uh, truck vendors, [inaudible]. The sexual oriented businesses, after hours pool hall, alcohol permits, [inaudible]. Uh, we issue bills in our department, and in our department, we take about an average of thirteen million dollars every month. Cash checks, credit cards, stuff like that. Um, we have about ninety different areas in our department. Um, we have a field department, which consists of nine employees, and the fields, uh, [inaudible] providing the meter reads whether we repeat bills of door, electronic portal, or manually. They are also responsible for the connection and disconnections of all the water services throughout the city. Then we go to our building department, and our building department consists of two building clerks, and those two people are responsible for taking the information from the meter reads and doing the whole entire building, uh, for the city of Odessa. We have customer service, we currently have seven customer service reps with one supervisor, and they handle the day-to-day calls, and they handle about a hundred and fifty calls a week. Honestly, those are not the ones including that are dropped because of the built system and stuff like that, but they do handle that piece a hundred and fifty per rep. Um, and that's in-person, with questions and issues about their bills, and they pay in arrangements, whatever, they have questions about their bill. Um, our cashier department, this department consists of four cashiers and one supervisor. Um, this department pays utility payments amongst all the other payments in the city. So the cashiers process every department's deposits, that's including parts, rapid ranch, animal control, OPB, DMS, engineering, inspection, and any special events that the city gives, uh, conducting, all those money's paid, be closed through the cashier department and building collection. Um, we are responsible for reconciling all that cash and those checks, online payments, IVR payments. Anything that comes through the station, the city receives, it goes through the building collection. Uh, we have one collector, and this person works at collection, lets through our [inaudible], which helps us minimize our write-off amount for utilities that we have handled here at this [inaudible]. Um, we have one office support, uh, specialist, and she helps on whatever we need. She really basically does [inaudible] for our new contracts, and she does the general building invoice every month for her department, and all the other duties that we need for the building area also. Um, EMS [inaudible] clerks, we have three responsible for all the building, uh, the annual strikes in the city of Odessa. And we also, they are also, uh, responsible for collecting those outstanding bills. Uh, they're responsible for maintaining hardship [inaudible] that the city of Odessa, uh, has to assist our students. We have one city, uh, citizen liaison, and she is responsible for greeting other citizens when you walk into city hall, and she helps the citizens assist the [inaudible] department, answer any phone calls, and direct them on whatever they may need for that particular day. And we have one senior admin, uh, she is a person responsible for, uh, assisting the director and myself to be administrated by the department, including the budget, and she also handles hotel motel tax, and issues in the areas of [inaudible]. And that's about, yeah, we have about thirty-five employees, and I'm not sure, we're about five employees short. Norman? Five, thank you. [inaudible].
I have a question.
Yeah.
Also, for the customers that are autograph, uh, [inaudible]. I understand that that was a third party that would actually handle the autograph thing, that was, uh, true.
Well, we have, we have two ways you can set up bottom pay. Uh, we have where, uh, this is what we used to do prior to Paymentis, which is our online portal today. We would have a customer come in, allow me authorization for, give us a voiding check, which was the old way. So we have all of those accounts that are [inaudible], and there's other bottom accounts, there's thousands of accounts that are [inaudible]. We handle those [inaudible]. So, and then Paymentis is the one we have for the last two years, where the customer goes, and they create a [inaudible], and they set up their own bottom pay online. Yes, sir, so that is our current system.
The leading question you're asking, [inaudible].
It's just Paymentis.
So before, she said, down, some of the critical vacancies that she had, [inaudible]. But I think so, critical, how many, uh, home takers or customer service reps are insured?
We're kind of short two customer service reps and the customer service supervisor.
So, um, we have to get those filled, um, it's our phone system combined with those two people. Uh, three people being sure, um, providing the best customer service we can provide. Uh, and, do you want to start and say this for this meeting?
It's, uh, sixty.
So it's, it's a, it's a difficult job, basically, you know, I'm sorry to interrupt, uh, I'm just saying it's a difficult job. You're taking calls from citizens, um, sometimes, uh, citizens are very nice, and sometimes not. Um, and then the citizens are concerned about their bill, and, and so, and so, it's a very difficult. Do you want to turn over?
It's pretty hard, maybe.
With the cyber attack, everything has gone on, it's very difficult to figure, we could do a much better job there, but we could, oh.
Is there an opportunity? I know that when I call, and I have customer service people, you know, they're working, or, it's, they're calling somewhere, they're not [inaudible]. Arm that.
I think that's, I would be better.
Yeah, I mean, just to, as a stopgap, you know.
I think that's definitely something we should consider, we should consider, uh, [inaudible]. We should consider looking at our phone system to ask the question, a lot, a lot of times when you call, there's a wait with a, another entity, they'll tell you, hey, there's an hour late, or they'll call you back. They do not, so that you're not waiting right now, assist the way it works, that if all the call takers are busy, it puts them in queue. After seven minutes on queue, it drops the call. So that is something we really need to practice.
Rich [inaudible], this is, uh, [inaudible]. I probably get eight to play from two a day, I truly support Rich, I don't know what I'm doing with it, and most of our good people call, and they're dropping our shit about it. So it is something we have to [inaudible].
Absolutely.
That's one of my problems.
That's not really [inaudible], that's, that's a system [inaudible]. And combine that with the cyber attack that we have, and the, to keep the best call [inaudible]. We need to do a much better job. Might you have some more questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morton. Next, we have building services, uh, [inaudible]. [inaudible].
It'll come out. Morning, Mayor, [inaudible]. Name's [inaudible]. Our department consists of about fourteen people, including myself, while they're hiring a [inaudible], which I believe that we already have one already. Uh, we, uh, actually have our staff being [inaudible] on a daily basis, [inaudible]. Uh, we have many duties of pay and conserve, and day-to-day basis. We comply and compromise with most city departments with renovations, bringing in any in-house projects with the proper [inaudible]. We also do in-house training, we provide a design, construction components to the [inaudible]. We also provide the proper training and evaluation staff for [inaudible]. We also oversee and maintain our presence in the city buildings, develop long-term and upgrade for renovations, ensure the buildings are compliant with safety and access to standards, [inaudible]. Manage the budget to accommodate [inaudible] to certain needs, to place a [inaudible] keeping of equipments, we ensure [inaudible] long-term [inaudible] are functional and [inaudible]. We perform at a [inaudible] team, and any emergency maintenance to, uh, city buildings. We also accommodate all departments with their needs, and work with [inaudible]. We treat all departments equally, and very, without disrespect to each other as a staff member.
Other questions?
Period. What's the [inaudible]?
Uh, well, I'm pretty [inaudible] on all that, so. People are [inaudible], you know, every [inaudible] is pretty much [inaudible].
Well, by [inaudible]. Chris, are your greatest need, or your desire, or problem?
Well, our greatest need is to really have more [inaudible]. Uh, for sure, [inaudible]. I wanna, I want the guys to know that [inaudible] has to move up instead of just saying that [inaudible]. So, you know, I wanna create [inaudible], you know, so that I can get more pay, for one. Uh, I'm in a [inaudible], I'm a [inaudible] for twenty-five years, and I [inaudible] you guys [inaudible]. I have a [inaudible] [inaudible]. We just hired a plumber, not a plumber, just, just once ago. It's not great, it's kind of move out, but I mean, find a way to try to, try to [inaudible]. The [inaudible], but so far, so good, we had our guys together, so we're doing [inaudible].
How many vacancies do you have, man?
We just hired our [inaudible] uh, just yesterday, so. So, but he's coming on board, and we're just starting to [inaudible].
No vacancies.
No vacancies.
And how many buildings do you make payments?
Pretty much, uh, all of city of Odessa, that, uh, [inaudible] control, all part, part of [inaudible]. We have all [inaudible]. Uh, PD, RIS, [inaudible]. Pretty much [inaudible].
I, you know, I have one for [inaudible]. This is a leading question, so the [inaudible].
We have issues with, all of us is pretty much the only one that we can.
The second question tied into that, very, discussion along that, is about, um, regular service. Regular service and also [inaudible] contracts, [inaudible]. How, how do we evolve today to, to, to that issue?
We normally [inaudible], we, we have [inaudible]. We come out [inaudible]. Everyone, but it's always, and they have other [inaudible]. They so hard that they're [inaudible] people come in at any time, knowing that they're pretty much the only one that does [inaudible]. So it's, it's kinda hard, so even when I edit it down, I mean, we get on it real quick, that's what we get. And sometimes it might take a lot of [inaudible]. It's a long [inaudible], I mean, it's, it's something that, you know, [inaudible]. It's a long, it's, it's something that, you know, it has to, it's, it's a way, everybody does come down, but, I mean, we're, we're regular.
Well, there's college, there's trade school, so, training, you know, training going to college, fun, everybody, could we look into hiring while they're training, while they're going to school, and look, hire them into this as a, as a student, while they're learning, practicing, right? Do you see one thing?
I understand.
As long as they're quick on that's a college, and, and bringing them, you know, through the ranks like that, so then, and, uh, I see, don't make a lot of money to see people at that college, so for me, it's important, you should, you should be able to partner, and like an internship.
Well, that's something that we'll give to residents, not, I don't know if they have that question in my system as well, but that would be something that I don't want that I would probably, I would recommend, that'd be something we could do, you know, that we have qualified people doing what we do, but it takes back to that thing.
I bet that we should, the thing that we have is, meaning the city is a part of it, but the way they have to be a call line, why, why not?
He, he, he'll be here a little later today, so, Mr. Ducks will be here at eight. I do have a question. Next, communications, one of you's angry.
Good morning, Mayor Councilman, Mr. Morton, um, I have this in your file of books, um, and I really whittled it down, um, for you because I know, um, some of your department have a lot of questions. I kind of want to hear back off the building inspection, what we talked about, on our social media, I get lots and lots of questions about that, that you can add, so, one thing, and as we learn to communicate better between us, there is an email they have set up, it's called D C email, that is after dash two X dot gov, and so I give people two options, I can either take a phone number, get a sort of building inspection department, or vice versa, here's an email, and they're very good about responding to members, I know that you guys really know their topic, that we're trying to get everyone that has a concern, so unfortunately, that is just an issue, it's so common, we're trying to find a way to work around it. We also see the form on our website, and this was again, working closely with building inspection, where people gave me that payment arrangement, they can go through that form and get that done that way. Going off of what you said, Mr. Stoker, um, we have thought outside the box and communication, it sounds, sometimes it, it doesn't, it's not a skill that everyone has, so we use tech agency, in fact, I'm using a contractor from tech, she's from here, her dream is to work for the city, and she is doing it normally, so we're through tech agency, just trying to pick outside the box, because again, it's a different skill set. So in here, I know I cover a lot, I'm not going to get into too much of it, but background, people sometimes want to know about the background, of course, you know me from my journalism days, but I, I did work for five years as a director for promotions, uh, for a flower growing company, so I actually worked on a flower farm, and we serviced four, um, flower farms, and they would send me the holiday, to their company, for my new flowers, so that was something kind of different from what people know me from. Some of the things I'm really proud of are cost saving measures, and again, this comes with, just kind of beneath that line of websites, um, so jump to the section where it says cost saving measures, and it is, what's this, third tab? So this is a list, and I'm not going to go through all of them, but if you have questions, some of the things that we changed in every department, we were outsourcing a lot of communication work, so I worked with building inspection, I worked with the animal shelter, um, I worked with finance, sometimes, uh, police, buyer utilities, um, we worked with all the different departments, where in the past it was a little bit more separated, and they, they made higher marketing agencies, um, which they have some great expertise, it was just done a little bit differently in the past. So if you jump to the next tab where it says website, I'm kind of a firm believer in seeing it as believing, when I first logged in, our website was a three hundred and forty-five thousand and five year deal, it was what I called a very dirty house, that was the biggest complaint I used to get, is keep finding something on our website, it's just too confusing, so it was five thousand pages, twenty thousand links, we cleaned it up to a hundred and ninety-two pages, and we did that for simplicity, the directory has all the sub numbers, you got the departments, you have the divisions, you know, it's in there, but a lot of times we'd have to read, things would change, and it wouldn't get updated because it was so much work, so five years and a forty-five thousand dollar bill, next level, as you can see, turn the page, we've gotten it down to about five thousand. We were paying, um, the company a lot of money, and they were, they're a great company, we're still with them, we just didn't have the staff, or I know we looked at, we looked at the analytics, we looked at the metrics, and that's how we decided how we should be more of a person. So yeah, between that and all the ad files, and working with all the departments, this was some of the changes that, that were made, um, we helped provide some support to events, that was supposed to be a short term with that position servicing a lot of advise on the marketing and the educational opportunities. So we have our calendar, as you guys know, uh, for the first time, we had all the departments send in as many events as they could send in for the year, to let me know, hey, Chris, what's going on? Question? There's a lot of reading material here, let's see how many questions you can add here.
Let me ask a question on the, on the, on the actual structure, I see city events manager, is that position filled?
It's not filled, filled right now, but the focus on that, and that's where John and I talked in parts, he has the coordination of it, um, and Mr. Morton and I talked about it, division for that, which is to your advise, so in the past, I'll be giving a model, we pay a marketing agency, we can invoice for a other company, for golf commercials, well, in reality, they were giving us a station forty-five hundred. So a lot of times, when you do marketing agency, you have to pay the, the metal man, um, so we were making that source, one person that handles all those advise across all the different departments, as well as putting it on the website calendar, putting it on social media, letting the media know about these effects, about before this was the job.
So the third part would be an firefighter, the one in the management?
Well, we, we could change it, I mean, it's, it, it's kind of a, a gloss of a lot of things, um, so at the time, that's why, but the changing is easy.
So yeah, I think House of Stokers got a good point, um, and events coordinator, events manager is probably needs to be out, out in my opinion, out of arson rate, um, with things, the contract, the follow-up contract on, that, um, and reliance on the city for all things that, the city does give, in rotation, with the contract, but the agency has arson rate, and this is an firefight position, that's what we're doing, and that's what we call.
You say you think that that would cause?
No, I'm saying that position should be located in the, in the bar.
Okay, that's who we're managing.
I've owned the bar over the past year.
Yeah.
I don't know, it's kept a few months, I'm not sure that.
Yeah, see, nobody can tell me straight, who, who, that happened, but, but we don't know who that, who knows.
Well, in the past, the way that's a passive, we've partnered with nonprofits, um, downtown president for some, and, and other nonprofits depending on the event, but over time, every case the city plays a, a role with a staff, the hope is that those are put on by volunteers and fundraising gun, but the reality is, as time has passed, most of those now need on the city to happen, on most of their, uh, we would love to see, uh, active groups out there like downtown, if they, uh, leadership were back on those, but in any case, the city's going to, with staffing for degrees, um, finance is another thing, so, that is a need, um, and I would love to see, um, some of our nonprofit operations, a lot of those.
And I just think we ought to, we ought to get something off, and our mind is how we're going to handle that, we can fly a horse here, we know it right, so, we need to figure out how we're going to do it with the global contract inspires and.
Yeah, and that's interesting, and Mr. Morton, I sense you were supposed to provide support, and our support took on a different role than the anti-damn, but people, that fire company, and they got, at least the way it was done, this time was a hundred and fifty thousand, um, so just understand, create a light, so that fell under my department , it was twenty-six thousand minus O P D's, though, I'm not sure what that is yet, um, now we're getting a little bit of that money from the blow participants, I think it's going to cover our, our four percent.
Yeah, so, looking at what I'm at down the last year, um, I will give major props to Monica, working with the bar, the bar, not necessarily, and her, uh, she's really stepped up, thanks for managing the project, and nobody else.
Any other questions? Thank you. Me, Belvin, Naira, Enriquez.
I'm sorry, or do you have a best everybody else, are you, are any of these positions open, are you?
Yes, those positions are open.
All of them?
Um, well, not all of them have been technically approved.
So, so how many vacancies, so, sorry, that's whether funded or unfunded, how many vacancies?
Um, I think it's five in there, with unfunded, so five unfunded.
So, I'm looking at this chart, five.
Yeah, and going back to the term of the rate kind of way, um, they've gone through the building inspection, one thing I'm looking at doing differently is social media, especially with what we've been through in the past months, mental health is very much talked about with the, the younger generation, and I think sometimes what's being read on social media has been very tough, and, and the messages that it gave, it's, it's customer service, and it's tough, for them, sometimes, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Enriquez.
Good morning, and so, thank you, Mona, what notice that you know, is the, the public annual performance and evaluation report, that's a yearly report that we have to submit to HUD, and if you notice, it says twenty-two-three, with program, there's federal nominees, it's always going to be a year, so it's a beautiful paper. I just started this position in office, and so there's been some, uh, short-term goals with community development and public enforcement, one of those has been, I've been working on models and financials, and, uh, deputy city manager, the financial department, have been awesome, and helplessness at that charge, also, uh, the liquor department has been, played such a huge role, we're trying to update, um, all of our contracts, because they were all outdated, and just, we need, um, to be reviewed again, and purchasing it, and it can help us with, um, all of our, uh, procurement procedures, that were not being followed, and so it has been something that I have been working very hard to keep along with the rest of the departments, to be doing everything as they are, so that's, that's been difficult. Um, like I said, uh, we are, we're getting here program yet versus this one year, so the, the money for, uh, program, the twenty-four, uh, they haven't been released to us yet, okay, so it can be as early as December, or as late as, late February or March, so we still, we don't know that, um, just so they can know, we were granted a little over one point two million, I just want to give you a breakdown, that, uh, for C D B G funding, that's going to be eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, a little bit more, and then your home funding is going to be three hundred and two thousand and change, and the reason I bring these amounts up is because in June, we are going to have a privilege of awarding money, C D B G money to sub recipients, nonprofits, but, uh, a lot of, uh, there's a misunderstanding that the eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand is going to be for sub recipients, it isn't, um, HUD has caps on these amounts, and what we use, so out of the eighty-eight, uh, eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, fifteen percent of that is the cap for public services, which is what the sub recipients, nonprofits ask for, so that's a really important amount, so that y'all are not, I mean, misunderstanding that the entire mail is going to be eligible for awarding to these nonprofits. So, um, on that same note, the home funding, which is something that, um, I'm working on, is out of the three hundred and thirteen thousand that we see, we have to put aside fifteen percent of that for Chodo, which is a community housing development organization, and I'm really excited about this, because we haven't had one in years, and so next week I have a meeting, have to, uh, have to, to see if they will afford a Chodo, because if it happens, within six years, we don't use that fifteen, um, percent, HUD takes that money back, I don't want to have HUD take that money back, I want to use it for the community, and so I'm going to start, uh, I'm going to talk to them, not a lot of my meetings probably, in the area about three hundred thousand, but I'd rather just keep the three hundred thousand than to, uh, give them back to HUD. Now, these emails, like I said, are over a six-year period, we have deadline, so, uh, I believe on October, we lost, um, well, we didn't lose, HUD took the money back, because we didn't want to have a Chodo, so I'm really excited about that, and see how that works. Um, the other, or that, um, the other thing, the total of the one point two, uh, twenty percent of that, that's the cap, and that's what we can use for administrative costs, now that covers salaries, office equipment, um, training, advertising, legal notices, that kind of stuff, so we are capped at twenty percent out of that one point two, and, um, we were in the training, and that amount, uh, probably ministers going to diminish, and so unfortunately, municipalities continue to get less and less funding, so just FYI, because in June, y'all are going to have, y'all are going to be doing all the subsequent applications, so that are, y'all are aware of that amount, and it's not in its entirety. Um, the other thing is that with this funding, we have, um, rental assistance, emergency rehab, um, yeah, we have a lawn home program for the elderly and disabled, that is a huge problem in the community, the local weeds, uh, vegetation, that kind of stuff, debris, all that, so.
Questions?
Say you have programs for disabled, uh, senior citizens who are going to go in.
Yes, yes.
Somebody asked me.
Yes, you do, and I will be asking for more, more money for that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm gonna answer, greatest needs, how many, can you respond, greatest needs?
Okay, so I'm sure y'all are aware that in twenty nineteen, uh, the city of Odessa has annexed a huge number of areas of land, we have, and we have been, there's a huge need for housing, and so a lot of those areas that have been annexed are so residential, and therefore, these new houses are coming up. Well, the problem with the new houses is that somebody has to make sure that our code enforcement officers basically monitor those areas to make sure that there are any qualifications, I'm sure all of y'all have received, uh, emails from constituents, however, weeds, debris, junk, et cetera, well, we are, I don't know how many, I won't be presenting without number, how many are the acreage, are these what footage that the city has acquired relaxation, well, that means that there's more to expect, and this is something that on PD, uh, uh, O P D, fire department, us, we have to monitor that, and I only have fourteen inspectors, and I'm short, um, one, my name, having one that starts, uh, but I have one that is on leave, for military leave, and it's going to be gone within years, so that's one less, and I can't fill that position, and so that is the problem, that yes, you're creating all these new subjects, who's going to monitor them, and so I don't have a staff for that, I will be asking for that, because it doesn't involve a person, it's going to involve equipment, vehicles, so all of that's going to be, it's going to be something that I'm going to be asking for, going to be like.
Oh, is that one, do you have one position, how many positions do you have?
I have one position, so that's.
Is your sign, there's a need for more?
Well, yes, because of these new areas that have been, I mean, we annexed, and I'm sure there might even be a building in some areas, and we are dealing with phone calls, the lawn, I like. The lawn area is one of our busiest. And we have one person, one inspector for that area. And that area is growing. So that's where, that's where I'm at. And we try to take care of all of your, all these incident planes, phone calls. We do our code enforcement, we do neighborhood sweeps. In twenty twenty-four, they picked up over thirty-four tons of debris, which also include over a hundred and thirty tires below. And so, that is because of that cost because those are, those are to be discarded and by state regulations a certain way. So, all of that is, that's it.
Good point of information too. And thank you for the planning because if you're just taking a little, a little population during the twenty-nine now, that will be, and then we're finding out, but just, just for those that do not know, we will actually be a difficult account of our own. And that's actually an important mention. So you seem to make on social media, we have a lot of, a lot of hands here. So if you're interested in going on there and, you know, to see something in social media, take a look at the official account, I'm sure it's pretty close.
Thank you. I also wanted to mention that in twenty twenty-four, there were over sixteen thousand losses of violations that were issued. And that means it's part of dealing and educating the citizens. That's another thing we do is we go to businesses, to apartment complexes, and educate management about what is required out there.
Any other questions?
We had, you made, we had little small houses on the blocks that we have on the first day out there. Is that student building?
Actually, yes, and that's something that Habitat recommended, we were talking about last week. So I'm really excited about that.
Good, good, because we know you, I can start earlier.
Yes, I agree. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to shout to them. Because then we, we have provided them, we have sold them the land, the loss, and I thought, why not? Why do you have to go there and all of that?
Thank you. Next, we have Bellemann Services and Elizabeth Shawnee. I will remind everybody to be cognizant of the time when you hear this timer go off. I know, I know everybody wants to be out here for a minute.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You did say we have building services, I have building conditions, so I don't know if they're separate or if they're all together.
Um, I was just, about the, the Bellemann Service.
All together?
I guess, okay, we get normal, we get a little.
Um, I already have offered to be a sponsor, so I didn't wanna go over the same topic that I have already. I wanted to talk more about, you're gonna have a couple packages in front of me that are mine, which is this one. This one will give you all of the data stats on time response, how it's taken us in order to be able to respond to all of the permitting inspections that we have. If you go to feature, it will call out how it will be done for you. We did a summary of the weekend. And the reason why I'm bringing this up is because you will be getting calls and people complaining saying, "Somebody's selling my project, somebody is doing something." It's gonna happen. What I would love to work with you guys on that is send them back. Tell, have you talked to the directors of development? Have you talked to the neighbors? Talk to them first, figure it out with them. And if you guys can't figure it out, then call me back. I'm here and you know, we can figure out the solutions or problems or whatever they have. But the minute that you guys get involved, then, you know, I'm called to ask for something. They think that we need to prioritize that. I like to treat everybody equally and I don't like pushing people ahead or putting, you know, as they come, that's how we like to do it. So usually, the people that you guys are hearing from will be about one percent of developers that don't want to follow. But that's fine, we can work with them, you know, that's our job. And so, what I want to highlight from here is that usually for our inspectors and our permanent we have a rate that is four point seven six hours, which is really good. I, I will take the challenge and have you guys compare it to any other city. And if they're doing better, we'll work on it, you know, but I just wanted to highlight that. So that goes, it's the same thing for stormwater and building, per, per climbing and so. So I'll let you guys read that. If you guys have more questions, you guys can email me and I'm happy to respond to any concerns they have. The other subject that I really wanted to talk about is vision. I know one of your guys' goal is going to be, where are we going with this? What is gonna be our vision? And I would love to be, you know, in those conversations with you guys. And the reason why is because we have different participants that are, let's take, for example, Habitat. You guys will have the latest downtown design implementation that was created. One of the biggest challenges of us hiring somebody else is that they're comparing us and they're always comparing us with the Fort Worth, with Dallas, with Austin. Their concepts, their way of developing is not the way that we develop. So when we have a design and a concept, it doesn't mean that it's going to work here. I'm glad to see a lot of communities here. I saw Randy and I saw also, or didn't you though? Economic Development, Maxine was here. And I think the hospitals, if they, like Port County, County, you know, there's so many pieces that are being developed right now that we need to sit down and we need to talk about where is our mission and how we're gonna work together. Collaboration is key. Dina here as well, and she was a big part of Midland when they were doing the Central Park. And so, that's how they were able to do a lot. It's like they worked together. They had their vision, they knew what they wanted to do and they focused on that. And that's something that I just wanted to bring up to you guys. I would love to be, my staff and I are ready to go. But we do need that guidance, that leadership to, to us to work in that step.
Can you question for Charles? Do you have a counter for counties? Man, I thought there was a beautiful plan. Do they have a counter for Black Hills or, or some counties?
They don't.
They got it.
But they, they're fast to plan a showing and open, like, I guess, like civic center, to say. I've been, I've had some one community actions or, or several discussions with them. See if there's a way that we can probably work together. But at the end of the day, you guys are the ones that will be handling all that. And I've always helped bring the pieces together.
So Shawnee, do you have any other positions?
Oh, yes, so they've already saw all of that information prior to. So I have forty-four points and I'm like, I was already, so I have like over two positions. And that's the ones that have been approved, as I was talking to Mr. Morgan this week, is we know a lot more.
Well, they're gonna be discussing that in a moment, so that's all of the numbers. Any other questions?
Thank you. Okay.
Equipment Services, Virginia Galvedon, got it better that time.
Good morning, I'm so Mr. Mayor, I'm born. My name is Virginia Galvedon, I am head next week coordinating for Equipment Services. Equipment Services is a part of thirteen and maintaining vehicles and equipment for the city of Odessa. Our business is over nine hundred vehicles in the neighborhood. We always see the roof shop, tire truck, as well as the truck department and tire auto shop. We work closely with both national and local vendors in order to find the appropriate vehicles and repair it when needed. We have a few projects we are currently working on, including the fuel station collective and up and running, installing a new GTS charge connected with our new fuel system, getting vehicles ready for auction. How can these fuel stations work out, better monitor fuel usage? And the P and services, currently we have employees that were using old PIN numbers. And so, you had about six or seven employees, say, PIN number, when they were in a poor vehicle. So we could never really track what vehicle was that would be used to be able to deal. So that's the big issue, the people trying to get that. We believe in cross-training our employees so that they can move from a three-level position up to a mechanic position or higher paid position and that's helping some of our employees there. We have made a priority to get our mechanics EBT certified so they can work on our emergency vehicles. So has helped kept costs down by keeping our people from being outsourced and possibly prepared. We currently have a mechanic that works on fire trucks and ambulance and he's, I call him, he's seven on the holidays. He's out there all the time. So we are leading and working closely to solve the ways our crash truck issues. We have five trucks right now currently that are outsourced to local vendors. And our main goal in Equipment Services is to keep our city people running in the best condition possible. We currently have about forty employees and our leader, the Director, two tire techs, two heavy side mechanics, and one bike side mechanic.
So this is a good time, a lot of solid waste, but I know you said you had five or outside maybe going there?
Yes, we have five solid weekends outsourced.
Any in-source we're still working on?
Yes, we have some that we're working on right now. We have a rush technician, he's a mechanic that we have with Rush. And I know that they can be costly to have in there, but he does have the computer that has a lot of programs that we need to, we're able to use that program. And he is very powerful. So what he's, who's actually helping sort of the mechanics that have moved to the heavy side and training them and helping them learn how to better fix vehicles that they have.
Please understand, I'm not casting any blame or fault.
Right.
It's looking for solutions, but probably in ninety days, I probably have two hundred complaints about trucks.
Right.
And so, we, I know we've worked trucks, we're coming, I don't know why it takes so long, but it's not our fault, obviously.
No, it takes a while to be on trucks.
I don't think, Eric, we can deal with trash trucks less than six, twelve miles.
Well, and actually, I don't wanna spoil for just, but we actually, we actually.
Go ahead.
We're trucks. We actually delivered four trucks yesterday to, to Sango, they're just two rollouts. And we have another one coming in this fall. It didn't come in because of the weather, so that, that made whole. And then that winter, for some reason, was having issues giving the trucks to them. But the minute that we did order, you guys did approve, that meant it wasn't going to be quickly when we, our trucks were first treated, that's the problem.
I don't wanna get into this, but I was told we only have one mechanic that's working on those trash trucks. Is that correct?
No, sir, we have one mechanic that's working on our, our fire trucks and ambulance. The other guys do work on fire trucks, truck trucks, but they also work on the other trucks that come in.
Money we paying Rush? Then we can hire two more paying the money we paying Rush.
We're paying.
But I, we're not gonna get into that right now. That's, that's a lot of money we paying Rush, but we have two, I'm pretty sure at a good price.
So, so break it down, we have the light side.
Yes, yes, sir. We have the light side takes care of your light side vehicles, fire trucks, your cars, stuff like that. The heavy side takes care of our ambulance, our fire trucks and our tire trucks are heavy, are heavy trucks.
And how many mechanics do you have on the side?
On the light side, we have five. And one of them does a lot of our, and then on the heavy side, we have one for Rush. And then we have Zeke, who he takes care of our emergency vehicles. And then we have two others we have. And that's for maybe two more heavy side of that.
So, how many vacancies?
We have five vacancies. And we did, we have two for, we have three mechanics that we, we need two tired technicians. We currently have one guy that we're running, we're running him right, yes, sir.
Okay, so you have a college that's training mechanics over here. Are we using these guys or are we adding? We can use these mechanics or we, or we, or trying to hire from them, or replace their personnel?
Our, we actually right now have, one, one of our new techs is going to call the general seat. And we have Eric, the light side supervisor, he's taking Mark over and he's training him, starting to frustrate him to get him to work with us and get somebody else to help him. There's a team that's going for mechanic. We haven't seen our management, at least we, we, but that's not something that we can take.
I don't know if that's fair or mean, but I know it's a true question, but vehicles we have, labors, if you have any ideas, you.
I mean, there's, there's a lot more light than there is heavy. We use a lot more of the fleet, that's just more of like, I don't know, do, do, do stuff like that. But, but what takes time is the heavy side. You have to look at that not all of the parts, you can't get all the parts of a trash truck just inward. They have to be, some of them can be fabricated, some of them can't. So we have to have some of the cans, you know, we have to be, you know, there are weird parts or whatever parts that they are, we have to get from that area. So that's what makes it hard.
What I found is part of the problem that we're facing today is that we went for a two-year period where we did not order any new trucks. That is what sets us behind when we have a long delivery day.
Leader of the member discussed that, because I'm not gonna blame this, because previous city council should have taken care of all these situations. We just didn't, and it's all on us. They just let it pile up, pile up, pile up. Now we're in a situation where we can't get it piled.
Yeah, have you seen those mid-term? Which I don't, I don't blame anybody, I'm just saying, that's what has occurred, whether it was COVID-related or nothing, it's, it's nothing available, nobody was manufacturing and no parts were available, so.
That doesn't matter, we just, we, okay? And I'm not gonna discuss it, but that don't have nothing to do with one mechanic for the city. As many vehicles, have you been over there? Have you been over there in business? You know, I'm just saying, it's thirty trash trucks over there. So there's no reason that previous city councils should, they should let that pile up like that. And I'm not talking about parts.
Do you know how many parts?
I'm a businessman, I'm a businessman.
I am too.
Okay, okay, I'm a businessman. Just like, who can ramp up, we should do something with the office, did you ramp it up two years ago?
Yes.
Well, it should have already been solved.
Well, we look at it, I do this, particularly for solid rates. We have some tolerances, it's fairly tight one on your little box, so.
I do have a quick question about outsourcing. And I know that I'm kind of talking about the tires. They'll go, because I've seen emails come through about tire shops, those, you know, for, are there other waiting maintenance things that, that really outsourcing if the maintenance shop is backed up, you know, maybe brakes or maybe a oil change or something like that, they could.
Our oil change, our oil changes through, our, they're probably really good about setting appointments if we can win. So we, our oil changes are really quick now with this deal system that we're gonna have. The good thing about that is you're gonna, they're gonna have a spot. And that spot is gonna be connected to that vehicle. And that vehicle, that spot is gonna let us know when that oil change is up. So when that oil change is up, it's over, then we give them a turn around mileage before they can run that vehicle. And once that vehicle runs into that mileage, then the building can give so much fuel before they have to move to the truck. So that's gonna help with our, because you will not believe how many vehicles we have running out there that do not commit for current, and that is our biggest issue is that I understand we have to keep the city running, but we also have to keep these vehicles going. And we can't keep them going. And we can't keep them going if they don't take the time to bring them in to get their brakes changed or their oil changed or their wiper changed or anything else. We have to hold our, our.
How long on average would it take a breakdown to happen?
A breakdown can happen within a day, half a day, it just depends on what vehicle we're working on, if it's not. We have, we tried to get Eric, we tried to set up a schedule to get those in. And then now we're, we're running into a problem that we still need to worry about. So as you all know, the state of Texas changed our inspection. So we no longer have to go get insecure vehicles like that. But now moving over twenty-six thousand pounds is considered emergency. We were not considered emergency vehicles. So now our vehicles have to pass DOT inspections. I can tell you some of these vehicles will not pass DOT. So now what we're doing is some of these vehicles that we have outsourced, our vendors are checking it over and making sure that every vehicle is taken to the vet and they're able to, um, get their inspections, then they won't have DOT. Eric, Jared, the last, the heavy side mechanic is also DOT certified and he's been testing other departments that have these heavy vehicles. And he gave them a list of what their vehicles have to pass to the vehicle to pass DOT. So that way we can keep them going, we won't have to. Because if we take them to the vendor that's going to do our DOT, he's already gone to see where I tagged it down. So that's just the, we're gonna do. So hopefully we can get this going and we like our.
Okay, one, one question. If we're using outside vendors because we had one that was not getting PD card. His problem was he take away sixty days to get paid.
Yes.
Is there any way we can look at a speed that pops that up? You know, small vendors, guys, he did transmission for them, he just said, look, I can't wait sixty-seven days, I leave my money with him. When I release that card, he can try to get paid.
Well, it should be a thirty day process.
Yeah.
Well, I, I do have to say that I have been working with Katie and our finance department. And we do have vendors that, especially our local vendors that I know are like mom and pop shop. What we are doing is they are giving them the option to be able to pick up their check on Friday.
So are we interested in an outside vendor? You use this guy to advertise, he said he was interested in trying to come back.
We have at least five now.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, we have more that we use for different stuff, but we have five that are really helping us. And like I said, Katie and Martin are giving the, the okay for the view and some of the stuff on Friday since they're mom and pop shop. And, and it'll make it easier for them to, to be getting any, any more.
Thank you. Uh, next, if I listen first, Angela Harden.
Good morning, everyone. As I mentioned earlier, we took forty drivers back. So we will, we will not forget this. So everybody's been given a board chart. It looks like this. And I'm not gonna go over that, but I'm just gonna do have a city that understands our problem about. So we have the, um, the person. The body buyers and persons in the single department can provide us with many advantages. Take care of terms of efficiency, as I was just talking about, and go with some strategic alignment issues. Some examples would be early to be approved financial overlap. This comes from aligning our understanding between commercial finance and regulations of financial transaction. It's all transaction for two parts, you have personal, you have financial. And we need all those parts to be that, that's definitely getting to this process. So the body has to go help. The main transactions that we're gonna be looking at, first of all, is our transactions. Contract compliance, this requires we would have some policies and regulations. Cross and grid, this account coding, that's our best process, our reporting process. Our audit will go much faster when we get this started at the beginning. And we're also gonna ensure clients will travel costs and people's, those have been the hot topics lately. We're also gonna have stronger audit rankings. So we're gonna work together, I know we're here with Gadsen Dollar. And I have this experience, I've got these various forms of leadership, I've had successes and I've had failures. I've learned from my failures and remembering all that together with this audit training and Gadsen Dollar is a game for me to begin the process of finding. We're gonna also help minimize fraud. We recently seen things that our departments would be buying, we would talk quicker. So we're gonna work towards aligning those things. This restructure is obviously gonna look hard to clearly define roles. We're going to work with each of our staff members on their experience and skill levels. That way we're gonna be able to evaluate these people and put our focus on putting a rat person in a rat position. We have good people. It doesn't mean our, our people are doing what they have best at, and we're gonna be looking at that. So to kind of break down the top three focuses, the CFO focus, audit. But right now, my focus, my personal focus is gonna be audit, audit, and then audit. And we know you wanna plan. So we have a timeline, Katie and I sat down, we built a timeline, working with a couple of resources in other cities. And we kind of audit their association. And anytime anybody wants to see it, we want to go over this with you. This timeline addresses issues and addresses how we're planning on getting them and what we're gonna do in the process to show you we're on track. I'm also gonna be looking at internal controls. Internal control, we have strong, we have successful audits. And internal control is gonna drive the processes. Financial reporting, that's been a hot topic. Katie and I are both gonna be working on financial period for deals. Um, one of the biggest things that we can maybe both you and Katie and Marissa is remain, remain a resource that every department has. We need to understand all the regular fuel compliance requirements, and we're gonna work with other departments, make sure everybody does. Proper staffing and development. Um, I have a hard teacher, I have a former back, I'm teaching, and I love doing that. And so we're gonna work on this back development. And I see a lot of different things, a lot of budget and payroll, purchasing, all the details going on at a higher level that we can roll it all in, if you find it great. Um, the finance director, Katie, she's done a great job in many areas. She had a cool focus on her, um, she's been on this time, that she walked into twelve months of leadership. And then her staff was busting right there and she walked into a big job and she's done well. But we're gonna focus her direction on budget development and compliance, that's a big topic. And she's very good at that. Um, she's gonna also remain available to all departments as a resource. She's gonna monitor our debt portfolio, she comes from banking background, she's perfect for this. She's also perfect to promote strategic investment. She's great at resolution review of legal process, she's got it. Um, she's gonna work with our board replacements, come on, we'd be OVC, our desifier resident. Um, she's also willing to work on financial reporting and staff management. She's gonna make sure all that we need to do. And we have Marissa, she's new as well. She's been less than a year in her firm. She's been in the city for a long time, which has very talented city, but very in her position. Her focus is gonna be on business, P cards, contracts, and warehouse. Come on, it's scheduled on her a little bit here, but she hasn't had a chance to talk. So I think she is on the schedule for later. Uh, so we work with this structure, we're gonna maximize every unit's capacity. All of us have different strengths and we're gonna put those together and we're gonna do great departments.
Here's your time, perfect. Questions?
Do you wanna hear this question, do you need to hear it anyway?
Yes, sir.
If you ask, ask them, if we were here, if we could, if you'd like to, about audit.
So we were able to speak with Weaver again, he is field manager for April twenty twenty five at East Thomas. He said there is a chance he'll go to you. Um, we have made great strides on staff audit, on audit end, and we need to be by our path this time. Um, I started this mission in January six, seven. So we are only now, and now, and all of that, to use a couple of the stuff that we wanted to. Uh, in addition to that, our finance management has been directed and they've been working on, on, and like, on, pretty much four separate. He can get it back and we are thinking. The issue is we, we are a big city and our controller had never had financial control experience through their institutional and government. Um, you can go back to that, but this is really different than audit and, and that control itself. So we're trying to heal, as we're done. So we're two for April, I'm a common technical, that's an R development, it is like dating a major. So if they are, if they are, it will be on that. That'll be the first year that my, 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 my full control of the year, we will be on that.
Oh, good luck to me.
Thank you. And the only thing that we need from the cap is exactly what you asked. Is we need you to know where we are, what brought us here and what we're doing to make it, and we need to afford. Because as long as we know we have your support, I guarantee you, Katie and myself are gonna work tirelessly, whatever it takes to do it. And this is, this is our passion, this is what we want to do in that career. So here are the three.
Do you think I'm doing this?
What do you, and on that board chart, the, the group, there's about four and five, yeah, or three? Two or three, I feel like.
And you're about to.
College?
I don't know about the class.
No, our, our, we don't have all the statistics yet, but that will be plenty.
Good to be in college.
That will be a good focus.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Fire Jason Cut.
All right, I'll be honest with you, I'm sure if I do this five, we'll kill.
You have nothing to do with all this?
No, I'm not. All right, so, uh, I'll just start off with the most important part of our company. Our department has a box with one floor of city. When fully staffed, we have two hundred and forty personnel to walk a lot, come to rebuild. We're sitting at two hundred and nineteen today, which leaves us twenty-one people. In the middle of twenty twenty-three, to the little city. And I believe you're dealing with private organization. All right, as you can see from that chart, we have five members of train staff. That includes myself, one train chief, seven addicts back, six, six of the visiting captains, which are also part of the train staff. Twenty-seven captains, twenty-seven captains, and the rest are firefighter, paramedics, seventy-five. Firefighter EMTs at twenty-one, firefighter beds at fourteen, current at seven. Our minimum staffing that we have every day on shift, per shift personnel is sixty. We run a minimum of six, of sixty people every day in the streets. That is to maximize efficiency and productivity of working together. Uh, they work a forty-eight, ninety-six schedule, two days on, four days off. We went to that back in twenty twenty, uh, with the understanding that four days off is a better rest period for our employees to get them rebooted. It mentally helps them, physically helps them, that four days off, instead of getting off one day, coming off the roof, shift high, and the next day they're getting ready to go back on, so that our department can get it back. Four days is a benefit of the talent and physical, uh, benefits of our people. Uh, in our fire marshal's office, we have twelve personnel. This past year, we created five. What we did have, we had nine investigator positions. And usually about five of those were never filled. Uh, what's that resulted in is inspections of businesses across the city were not being, not being completed. So what we did, we changed that. We don't need nine investigators. We can do the job of the investigation side of the story. So we changed five of those positions to inspectors. Inspectors don't have to have DVO license, they don't have to have any certifications. So we have four investigators, five inspectors, and five inspectors that currently work in our school. Two of them went to just the, to get certifications. And hopefully we can start to follow up on business, which turns out for us, not only for the life safety of the public, but the life safety of our customers. Uh, that being said, we have, uh, again, five inspectors or investigators on fire marshal, one fire marshal, and one administrator before that did. We have nine firehouses with the most recent being completed in twenty twenty-two. Before that, we ran with eight firehouses since nineteen eighty-three. Back in nineteen eighty, we were probably making about nine thousand miles. Keep that in mind, good to say. Currently, I believe we need at least three more firehouses in the city. As well, we need to request the two old ones from nineteen seventy-seven and nineteen eighty-three. We're working with a company called Dart Horse that uses previous and current one that gives us precise firehouse location. That's the main purpose of it, but it can give us a lot more data, it can tell us what a four man unit will do in certain location. It'll tell us if we have ambulance to some location, where it goes to the rum load and what we require. It's great, great data, it's a great, great company to work with. We have about ninety-eight percent of that completed today. We're waiting on just a little bit more data, maybe including their inputting into their system before we can start using it. The thing about it is if we meet them, they have twenty-four hours to have a run tonight, that software is updated. Uh, in twenty twenty-three, we, we received a class one ISO rating, first time we've ever had it, in Jordan County, in the last year. Kind of a, a deal that's, that we place our pride on is the line runs in there. Another town's duty and often not good for the public, but we are a busy part of it. We, we, we just finished up twenty twenty-four force, which now is our business year, we made twenty-two thousand eight point four. We covered all nine hundred plus square miles of each county, as well reach away with the region, state, and nation, as well as the region, state, and nation. And we request this through our tip. We made a lot of changes over the past few years, some of the most important ones are the changes in FMO that we discussed with the inspector. Uh, we created a squad concept model with two personnel. And our purpose for that was we run into the county, used to the old lady that's in ambulance. That was what we thought engine or ladder. We had one squad, we block another one when it comes to budget, it might happen. What that squad does is replaces the fire truck, the engine or the truck, I mean, from going out into the county, saving on one day.
Well, I wanted to interrupt you, I wrote down three squad. So right there, you, with the maintenance, that's a great idea when I came to watch. When they put that squad out, I was gonna sit the fire truck, fully water out on the down speed west side of the road, so we're gonna save a lot. And I think that's a great idea. Those things like that are really good.
I got a question, you said three new firehouses. How many personnel firemen can you get each firehouse?
Eighteen hundred and seven hundred and fifty.
So you're getting sixty more, I mean, forty per, a firehouse in your area. You're talking, what's the need, five, a year, or two years, three years, or now?
If we started today, it would launch, it would probably be two, two and a half years, four, if I'm just kidding. Our most important year, that's, is the part two. We cannot make our time frame, our, our time frame, part two, from the eastward part of the, or relation to one hundred and seven.
The three improved one, at least working, quitting that again, or?
That is, that's all, that's one of the ones we need to, to replace. That, that one was nineteen eighty, I'm sorry, nineteen seventy-seven, yeah.
I'm just trying to see if we need three or four.
What I would actually do, if I may, um, when we moved our station six on Brentwood to Pembroke, we created a problem. We moved to two farm orders, and now we have a large hole in the middle of the city. Between our, you can imagine in your head, our university and Dover station, station four, station six on Pembroke, station three on East University, and station two on Martin's Range. There's a large hole in the city, in the middle of this city, where we can't see their pipes.
There's a large hole in the city, in the middle of this city, where we can't see their bodies. What I would like to do, if we could make happen, not today, as soon as we can, um, I'd like to move Station Two north, and then build another one on the south side of Grand U and Martinis, or Grand U and, I don't know, Grand U, Grand U, Grand U. There was talk at one time, it was two lots on Grand U, real size, these are businesses. So the reason we didn't do that is that they weren't good. It wasn't, we, we looked at it. They want to get rid of it, so we thought, I know you put that as a solution. We wanted to.
We're in that area.
Well, we.
So if you're saying we don't need it in that area?
Right, my current, we just need to move another station, perfect, Station Two inward, and then put another one out on our campus. My opinion, I let this in, but just my opinion, when we get our, going, and we can see the need, that'll help a lot there.
And that'll be there for when?
We can actually look at it today, and try and catch. Take that or not have it, we could, we could.
Chris, here's boy. Stick your bill, though, you have, uh, probably, you know, one plus, over.
Field, but I mean, at least one, I don't know.
Thank you. Next, a Geo Intelligence, Mr. Norey.
I'm getting, I'm gonna give it forty-five minutes, I'm waiting for this, but, uh, looks like a ten minute break.
Okay, you got it.
Uh, not forty-five.
The rest are.
All right, we can go ahead and get started.
Yes, and if you're on the line, I will have plenty of people trying to...
No phone signal.
So, now we have Geo Intelligence with Mr. Teller right there.
So, hold me.
He'll be right back. He's right here.
Okay. Good morning. Morning. If you want to put one, you can put one in. You can probably take a pill or whatever. We're probably going to review. Also, for the point is, I think it's definitely what I say, geographic information for the department of Fields. I would like to say first, do you know what GIS is? Project Ormos has a project that's first. The GIS is geographic information. Like what's a hill? It's just a pretty name sitting here. So, take that away. Can everybody hear? Just one minute.
A little louder for me.
A little louder?
Yes.
Okay, so, we've said we have a harness of technology. Sharing all the information that is spatial. So, a couple of comments that are very spatial part, okay, you know? So, what's spatial part? Anything, everything that has a geographic reference, we'd like to capture that data, right? So, what is this? What does it play when it comes to something like Engineering Roy Cads or other places, other than math? Well, aren't the, not to put down engineers, but we're a little smarter than that. Our point line is, we all know, we have information. A hybrid, we've got a hybrid, we have the information of a hybrid. Like on a particular structure, we have the information. So, we all gathering information and all, right? So, Mr. Mayor, you just, one of the points I ask is, the first question is, what is GIS? Do you know what GIS is? So, GIS, geographic information system, right? And then continuing from there to how we use it. I can simply tell you real quick, the terminology that we have for GIS. GIS is a technology that allows us to capture, score, analyze, and visualize data related to locations on Earth. All right, so, we take them out. We make it digital, digital map, right? And then we print it, and then we give it a statement. And then six months of that, right? But the digital space of the data, you can update it. Okay? So, rather than continue on with, you know, you're going to ask for numbers, what I need, but first of all, you need to know what the taxes and what field offices is, and that's where you start. So that you're able to ask me what you need, or what other departments. So, going on with that, we are a department that helps the other departments. So, you can think of us as a tool for the system. We serve the public absolutely, absolutely serve the departments that we have here at the Bureau of Justice. We start from legal, making a document for a resolution that we do. We work with water and food systems, like a map on where talents are outside in the middle of night and receiving system. We work with finding development, so they develop the services. So that they can gather information for the development and all this, whatever, so to speak. So, we play a big role, a minimal role in almost every department depending on the need. So, the biggest part for us is, what is the need? It has to come to us to see if we can fulfill that need. If not, we will omit it, research, we are trying to research on the information, whether it's with PMA, PMA information, TNR, Texas National Resources Information Assessment. Depending on the need, yes. On that, we gather that information. So, that's the introduction of Fields. Any questions on that so far? All right. So, my name is Edgar Almata. Mayor, we're not hearing from that. I've been with City Hall twenty-four years. I spent ten of those years in utilities GIS, so I was able to start in the very beginning of some of the vacuum of utilities. And then moved on to GIS four years in the Jimon College as a part of this creative, a bit of a capacity in geographic information for years. And continue with that, right? So, prior to that, if it had any significance, I got eight years military. So, that's, I've done from Army, just ready to do it, so, okay? So, I get everybody's perspective, that's why I knew just explaining what's going on. All right. So, as it continue with introduction, there's a QR code right on that first page. We have time, we stand that quote, and it takes us to our website. All right? And then right there is just, you know, a lot of information that we can play with, we go with, and there's, you know, whatever question you need to add. So, what does GIS do right now as GIS action? We can always utilize the public information. So, a one stop shop for all information that we can get throughout the time of city, trying to get one area of searching for information spatially. You know, you can't, we have a long waiting period towards spatial. What do we offer? From that QR code, you can get to what's called an oldies hub, or S of GIS. And an oldies hub is just where we can put together our information, so that you, citizens, departments, anybody can grab the information from there and see if that particular application fits the need. If you do, and if it does not, you're welcome to call, we're open to emails, and we'll figure out what the need is and how to fix it. All right? We have several different little applications that are depending on what you are looking for. We have a general purpose map, you have a little bit of everything. We have a syllabus, gender map. Believe it or not, that's the one that we just question we get, in my inside or outside of the building. We have a map that says, like, yes, yes, all right? All right, I think I can see that on one page there. So, then, if you continue with the site, there's going to be interactive maps, about fifteen maps there, depending on what they do. So, being serious, you check every part, number one question we get. The second question, probably get more is, where's my nearest item? Skip it. Yes, all of them have, let's see. So, a bunch of little applications that we've got going on, right? As you can see from the, a couple of little quick little slides. My old email is on the very last page. From Mayor Rother. All right, so, look at that, we have a map that we can use by the departments, and anybody that can check on the web map and see. I wanted to visit a statistic on a particular map. So, general practice map right there, you see that little graph coming down, up and down, up and down, six months of using the map map, right? So, we're very proud of this map right here, because it's quite big. Okay, and you can see that, you can see the mechanisms, the downs and the levers. Okay, so what help can you get from this graph? If you're reading this, what can you tell from that? On the demo first. All right? If you look at the end of November, you can see Thanksgiving. Or it comes next, nobody worked on Thanksgiving. All right, it was very well on there. And then you could get December, for Christmas, people did work on it. So, November, we really paid for it. And now that last graph right there, City Royal will host the volume district map for the county. So, we have all that information on there. So, you can see that that graph, the place is pretty dormant for a good while, and then it just spikes out and on. You can see that nice big spike on it, that's more than a week ago. Again, that's the information that we provide for them, you can push it down here, anything and everything, a lot of it went down to, if there is a need, they'll come to us to see if there's a point, based on point being like a desolates. And then pick the other area where they need it for the map, so we can do that for all of them. So...
Thank you. Questions?
I have just various questions. You get a lot from different departments.
Yes, what? Which department, Paul, you're wrong on the word, sorry. You're wrong, you didn't hear Paul's name. Not even, he's not here, but, yes. You're wrong, Paul, but also engineering is the most common. Followed probably by, it gets called computer development, thanks for all the information on right now. But definitely engineering, this is your one, I'm providing, my name. Did one of the citizens Friday at four. So, we, we are a department of eight. We are on this one mission. We have geographic information off this server itself, we have a coordinator. A deputy administrator that helps us with the website and all that stuff up there. Two seniors, two analysts, two senior analysts, two analysts in each sector. We have a question for talent, where does talent for me? For us, talent is probably the administrator, in that where you can locate it for them, you may not know where the area is at the state, but it is limited in controlling there. So, we can lose our personal control, and it's hard, even if we're in control. They can navigate this too, so that would be a challenge, just to stay, keeping pressure, and we're pretty good with that.
Any other questions?
And where do you use that house? Do you use that house in the city hall?
Yes, we are in the municipal office on the first floor, we buy our cars from the old age. See, one.
I have no relationship with any old age candidate.
With, with Mr. Rambler? Well, Mr. Rambler was mine, we had a good relationship.
I'm working on some teams, I've already met him, so I don't know why he got it.
Okay, and I've worked with him, I've worked with him over there, I'm sorry.
This one is last one. Have you been influenced by AI?
AI, AI is a very good tool in this, in this environment. There's areas that we're going to learn, because of the work of AI, competition, helping to kind of predict certain areas, or help take out. More like any area of, whether the building or the not building. That's not actually kind of doing the map already, the building's not very good. So, real things like that, but yes, variable, and maybe automating more processes. And this thing is never developing, so, we're smart right now, but we're not smart moving forward very long.
Thank you. You have animal services, Kelly.
I'm Kelly Hendricks, I'm in the animal services, I run it. We, it's two divisions, it's the shelter and fields, so we're separate. We separated from the Bessa Police Department in October of last year, to be a standalone unit. Just real quick, I've been in government services one way or another, sometimes by a cleaner, I won't tell you how old I am, so. I started with the Bessa PD in nineteen eighty-one as first female jailer in Bessa, went on to be a police officer into investigations. I worked for ECISB police, saw Ross Police Department as a lieutenant, and continued on in law enforcement for twenty-six years. Then I transferred over into the Attorney General's Office where I retired. And then I came back to the police department, almost forty years later. So, here I am since two thousand and one, running the shelter. We went from an eight thousand square foot building, that was built, I believe, in fifty-three. And it was two buildings, if I remember, and they passed along, and we built a new building, twenty-two thousand square feet. It houses two hundred and thirty-one kennels, or a state quarantine facility, that we get inspected every year by state law. We hold surgeries every week, it's a shelter for adopted animals by city ordinance. Recently, in October, we also passed numerous city ordinances and advised them. It is now required under city ordinance that every animal within the city limits is altered, spayed, or neutered, and that's to try and stop the problems we have in the city. It's also a mandatory microchip, every animal needs to be microchipped, so we can return more to the owners when they get out. Because not every owner is irresponsible. Sometimes the wind blows the gate open and the dog runs, or cats out, or something. But people still believe that they should be able to allow their animals outside or free. And in today's society, we just can't do that. There's so many viruses and parasites and all the problems going on, we've got to start containing it somehow. We instituted breeders license, because we have a lot of backdoor breeders. We have a lot, we did a seller's permit. We have a lot of people coming in from even Fort Worth Downs to sell on our streets. Well, they're bringing viruses in as well, because there's no control or regulation over it. Litter permits, if you're going to have unwanted litters, you better have a permit for it. So, we're trying to do everything we can, everyone's like, well, you can't manage it, you can't manage it. Well, we're doing it one animal at a time, as best we can. And through monitoring the department and education, we hope to educate people more and learning. Now, when it comes to the actual staffing and stuff, we're hurting pretty badly. Right now, I have seven full, fully funded positions, I'm down to three. We have made offers to three people, I've got a new person starting on the twenty-first, and we have one in three forty, we're waiting on background for it. But when you look at seven, it's a twenty kennel, twenty-two thousand square feet, over four thousand animals a year, it's not enough. The biggest problem we have, and as the field has, they have five position fully funded. We asked for five more, and we only got one in this last place, so we have six. We're down, they have three, they pushed three, I believe they pushed three through requesting higher. So, we're trying to get up to five. The biggest problem is pay, and I'm going to be honest with you, it's pay, when we talk out of there. When they can go over here, they have to come in and start at twenty-three dollars an hour, and we start at seventeen, that's a big problem. Midland starts at nineteen, and over twenty dollars for field officers. We started sixteen for shelter pens. Our clerks, our basic clerk, your admin, they have twenty kennels, they're cross-trained in the nice way. They do everything that a tech does, except they have to work in front of a law and answer by. Our techs do the same thing that the field officers do, they just do it in the building. They're not out on the street, but we are working on programs to cross-train them to help cover twenty-four hour call when they need to be in the field. So, we've been working on cross-training at every avenue to try and fill the gaps. Our people work seven days a week, they don't work five days a week, they work holidays, they work implement weather, they work everything. They're technically first responders, but we were not included in the first responders when they did all that study, what, two, three years ago? The field officers were left out. So, they've been out on the spot call, they've been out on, stop direct traffic, they'll, I got an officer, got a guy out of the burning car. But they don't get paid, they're looked at the same. So, when you say, why aren't y'all being fully staffed? Who wants to do what we do and the pay we give? And a lot of that is, now, the benefit package we just got for the insurance, that counts. I, as an older person, looking in at this retirement, when I look at the child, you know, okay, I'm looking at that over there, I'm looking at that, what, how I can say that? These young people are trying to live paycheck to paycheck.
Thank you, Nick.
There's my, questions?
Your field staff, make sure that you saw.
No. I, I'm going to say this, Chief Darrell, I'm going to spare that one. Now, you can blame him for hiring me, because he's one of the hires.
We all make mistakes.
I love him. I would love for him to be certified, because the way they're treated in the field by people, they've been threatened, they've had to call for backup, they have no protection. They can't, if they see a cruelty happening, they have to call police officers to protect them, because they can't enforce that criminal law. They have to file a case, they have to present it for legal, they have to, yes, a police officer sees it on Sunday, they make their ass right there, they can't stop it. But the field officers cannot, they cannot.
Any questions?
Oh, I, I think, thank you, but I do, I do love them, the new house, people to come to the shelter, I'll sit and visit, and we can have a grill on top, I can give you whatever information you need.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Unit of resources, Carol Turr.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak about the unit resources department here. My name is Carol Turr, I'm the director. The HR office is located in City Hall, directly across from Norvus Office. I've been with the city since August of twenty twenty. I have a department that consists of HR managers who do some leadership about the year I have. I can be very diverse, one consists of physician and one executive department. I think you can see from our chart there, that each department position is vacant. As a, my team on the list will have a lead experience here since I was at City. And my HR manager has, I said, been here a year and a half, the recruiting system has been here about three months. So, we are clearly learning a lot of things within the department of City. Overall, the HR department is responsible for partnering with the departments that you heard from today to address the, I kind of want to go through a few of the functions that we handle. And just familiarize yourself with them, that's pretty profound for City, since they are a little bit different than the departments. So, overall, first and foremost, probably is the recruiting and hiring. I think everyone that you talked to today has, how hiring need, that's what we deal with a lot. So, we work in partnership with individual departments, the subject matter experts in their individual area. And we want to make sure that we properly describe and classify the companies. That may include things like developing job description, determining the qualifications, the testing needed, and aligning the position without a voucher. As you talked, some discrepancies in that, it's not a big issue. Once the need for field positions identified, either through attrition or through changing needs, then we're going to work with the department to establish a job opening. Those functions include getting approval to the field, making sure the position's accounted for, the position, control software, budget, and that's about it. We have the possible review applications, and ensure the hiring managers in each department get qualified applicants figured out. And we work with the department to set up the interviews, and we serve as a means of community patient coordination when the candidates in the hiring departments. After the department selects a candidate, we go through After the department selects a candidate, we go through the pre-hire process and the hiring processes. And for each department, that's gonna vary some, but for the early, it's gonna be things like completing the line of management authorization, working to access laxative certifications, decipher security training, drug screen, tax application. Throughout those functions, we need to make sure that our hiring practices are compliant with state compliance. Now, once we've passed that, we bring personnel, we begin our mowing process, we're gonna conduct a new hire orientation. We communicate our organizational structure, our rules, and give an overview of the city culture. Then we coordinate other departments, so there's benefits, take out the pain, to get somebody on board with the tools that need to go to their second day. We also assign office-wide training courses, such as harassment prevention training. Work with departments as needed, general or individually published training courses. Beyond that, we work throughout the employee lifecycle. And by that, we're working with the department to administer performance evaluation systems, performance improvement plans, counseling, discipline, if that's necessary. We administer family medical leave program, also the day-to-day program that someone needs to, along with their job and their technical evaluation. And a ton of functions that I didn't mention, most of them start with somebody coming in the office saying, how do I get a job? From the record keeping standpoint, we're responsible for maintaining the personnel records. Make sure they're complete, they're retained in accordance with the law. As part of that function, we respond to a number of different complaints. Next, currently, we start to advise the organization about changes to appointment matters, such as any laws or regulations that affect us. As an example, we went through a process of health impact analysis and compliance plan for the adults' overtime changes. Salary threshold regulations that were ready to be lifted, so we make sure that people are ready. That plan is high-handed prior to being put in the court, so you probably can get working on what it's in need to make that's a component of the organization. Hopefully, I can also make a summary. So. Do you have any questions?
Charles, when a department goes to you to hire a person in their department, do you, the HR director, sit salary based on the base skills in that position? Or does the department head help determine what you're getting salary that person started?
We have a classification plan that has been developed. We've got one in place now and our consultants are revising the same scores. But each job that we have, we have three hundred and fifty job classifications within the city. Each of those is assigned to a particular adult animal that has a pre-determined salary. So we have similar education and experience requirements with similar educational experiences. And then each position that they fill, we take a look at that, the department head needs that to be considered reclassification, we have a process to do.
I ask that question because I've been on the council for two years and I've heard that the, so exceptions made in some areas hiring people based on previous dollar amounts of that position maybe, kind of thing. I didn't want to pursue it because as a councilman, I'm not gonna micromanage any department of the city. But I'm concerned I'm gonna go to the city management because that, you know, that's your situation. But I just wanted to know because if I hear it again, what I'm gonna do, you know, if there's exceptions made to the dollar amount someone is paid versus what that position has paid you previously. Does that make any sense to you, what you're talking about?
Yes, sure. That does come up on occasion. We have, we've been for a period of about thirteen years where the classification plan and salary status were not accepted. And that created some areas that where we just lost touch with the department. So we have had positions which are particularly difficult to fill. A lot of times we're in competition, direct competition with what we all intend to do. And the department director, rather than waiting for the classification plan to revise their picture of your own project, will come in and request a one-off exception. Those go through the city manager and the city's discretion, whether or not to be a one-off payment matter.
Well, that makes sense to you, that made it clear by attitude, so.
I agree.
Better find.
Of course. And the other question. And that would be, when you get notifications from a department or a funded position that they need personnel. I know it goes to the city, we have a website, yeah, I know it goes with one head or two, um, sort of to the top. And what I care of is, is that position becomes so important, either by need or rent, that it goes to third-party sources. Can you, can you shout further than that? Our, the website that we had, as you click on our website, it gives you a little message that you're going to the next third-party one website. When we post to, if the system's called that way. It automatically posts to a variety of third-party websites. So there are sixty or seventy websites that it pushes up there. Beyond that, there are companies like the, some of those that are collaborative. So they will go out and pull jobs from, this is work for a division on an internal website, and they'll post them. So it ends up getting a lot more traction, any of our jobs that get posted will get a lot more traction than just the city's website. And then we also have the option for certain significant positions to go out to third-party, heavy type of job boards. And that's part of the process of posting the positions, we'll work with the department to determine, but the way the department, I'm probably not going to find an attorney to decide and see that the city management is looking for jobs. We'll make sure that we work with the, uh, to find out what laws, who is interested in this whole thing. And any specific opinion or interest that he wants to work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ever write a technology for any doors?
Hey, someone, someone come up with a technology. I'll, so, I'm gonna, we won't get into more of the techs. So, this is sort of that goes of technology for the city. You know, we want to balance supporting operations and planning for each respective goal. Our mission is to create a business efficient, linear, uh, environment, rather than create a, uh, wooden fort, water fort, and a fishy, uh, the need, sort of aim, you wanna, uh. We're starting to take a more, a shift, you know, to feed the folks, especially when we want to do more profit and profit management stuff here. For trying to stick and add the regular standardized department. And we want to focus on automation and integration, that would kind of help do this. We want to have a continuous improvement mindset, and you can't have that without knowing what you do, how you deliver, that's why we're talking, you need to cross it, or you're gonna get it right. But future, we want to get a focus on cross-automation with AI adoption. All of our digital things, if you want to be, uh, in, 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 you know, you have to do this, it's not gonna happen. Our biggest challenge really is that, like, we support every project. So we have twenty different positions, we can't be experts at every field, and we have fire, PD, finance, they all do different things, they all have different requirements, they all have different demands. So, you know, that, to keep moving that direction is really our biggest challenge. We, for me, I would like, for a clear direction, you know, framework, so like, when we talk about building, it's over about, um, we've offered some issues for that. Both, there's always the price drop, right, like, oh, that's a lot of money. But, so how do we determine value, right, like, I don't know, maybe a framework for determining value is there? Okay, isn't a lot of money, doesn't add a lot of value. I talked to the director and I'll ask him, well, if it goes down, can we double down for three days? He'll be like, no. I'm like, what is the solution? Oh, it's like, you can't say, you can't double down if it's not what you've invested in. If I understand this fair, right, you, we need that framework, how do we, um, determine value? A lot of people have that framework, we know, you know, this is the priority, we can invest in, like, we need that comfort, and we can invest in what's important, right? How do we find that? It's invisible, right, like, we, we need to develop those, and that's kind of how I feel about it. And I feel a lot, I'm like, I don't know, like, if you move, if it goes down, it's gonna be painful, like, here's the solution, it costs a lot of money, it is. How do we determine that, right, like, um, we need something, like, I don't have anything, but I'm just pretty good. We have to, for IT, we can have to invest in, in testing environments, we need to prove that, like, recovery site, um, fire, I'm not supposed to fire, you know, labor, labor, we, that's one of the new fire stations, have this after recovery point. Now, it's a matter of investing in, banking it up, um, beginning to, are we gonna actually test these profits? Like, hey, if it goes down, can I always be stored, it's like, can we do the thing, can we test the outcome, can we say it's gonna be, like, they're gonna do this, I need it, right? Well, I need a place to prove it, I need to do it, absolutely, and, and bring these down, that's, um. I know, you know, like, I'm the director, I think I'm really awesome, like, I looked at around, wow, a lot of talent, a lot of motivated people. I know Kaylin and Miss Hope have offered to, um, come and have business, not to be in these studies, essentially, you know, putting a hat question. And then hopefully, all challenges, and they're still integrated, other people can understand and not just IT. So I mean, I, I mean, I'm really excited about that, kind of, those kinds of tests that were, were important. Um, we've gone have twenty-three positions for all fields, and we did, in the Gallup study, after the big time, they presented new, new positions, we're looking for some of that. And we did discover a public talent, and there's a need for a IT person dedicated to these, so we bring that up.
Well, so, so I was hearing wrong, I was hearing some kind of, like, you're sitting in your office and I just don't know, you know, I don't know, you know. City manager, one, for, for, for his doctor, you know, because he can captain, uh, from, go in city council, all sorts of work. For any director standing off there, think I don't know, or I, I just, I just don't know, or I'm not sure, follow that with the city manager.
Okay. And that's sort of putting it in mind, um.
You're not bothered, are you?
I just, I, I have this need to figure it out, they all have a reach out, they all have a last potential, so.
I need to ask this question. I've been asking thousands about the cyber attack, how many specifics, but are we, are we past it?
Yeah.
A little bit of some of it, and I mean, and I guess, is there a solution to this such thing for another attempt, that's my question.
There, there could be dangers, um, the mandate may change, right, anybody that thinks they're capable, they, you know, you may. I mean, you know.
Director is true.
That is true, that's what I'm, so I mean, um, we have to continue to build upon what we have, and we work on, I mean, we've met before, we talked about it three months ago. We just have to keep doing that work and keep establishing. We're in a very good position, but this is a forever thing, I mean, uh, we're just gonna have to work on the, the whole system, and that's kind of what, uh, Kaylin did, and I will always give her, create that point, and it, have something that we can build upon within the next two years. And it's really good to have it arriving because if I leave, some of the old things, it's there to say, this is important, I mean, they went through city leadership, they signed off on it, they all dream, need to do these things. Regardless of who remains, we have to push this forward, this is, so, um, we are, uh, we're taking things here, but it's the new reality, it's always gonna always be a threat. Yeah, so, if we did, sorry, we're gonna take a session with you, um, we'd be a threat, and we, we know about these. And we did this, say, every, every four months, just having, uh, even this pot of red, appearing something on the gray pot, something so that we can be aware. So that we can view something, if we go buy good or something that we need to do it right then, instead of waiting till after it happens, happened. So we're gonna leave some kind of, so, and it may just be that we just have to have a second session where we're, we're telling us what we want. Yeah, and that, that'd be awesome, um, because we'd love to do a property report every three months, and that's a session, I mean, for me, um, that would be perfect to help, uh, they align it, so, like, we have a network problem, most of it's managed, right? So it's easy for us to get distracted, we have a lot, there's every, I mean, there's tons of priorities, so it's very easy for people to do that, they, oh, okay, that's, that's, you know, we have to report those, and understand, like, maybe that's easy.
So I think one thing is, what's great is, you can, you can, you can, you know, if it needs to, if this is gonna be that, you can, you know, so that we are aware of, so we can get it all right, aren't you? And we had to stop all the good ones and bad ones, session we do in, um, is not, we have too much, just people left, so, but not, you know, two or four, because that, got that, but it, I don't think that's changed, and then they're all being capable. We can private some kind of LP on this, or whatever it is, and I think that's what you're asking for, one of the guys, the LP, how to handle this kind of situation.
Correct. Yeah. Look for it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony, appreciate it.
Uh, Leah Albertson, in this report.
Um, Leah Albertson, um, the director of this report, I think we're kind of here, so, I'm usually, um, helping inform the technology for this stuff. Um, just to kind of give you an overview, our main focus is, um, is going to be about an ad preparation of the laws. And it's kind of important here, um, we handle fact administration all the way from someone that may have committed capital abuse. And the real stuff, to somebody that comes to a meeting ticket or didn't have a pet vaccine. Um, no one comes to our, our bill, who wants to come, right? There's no, it's not like you're the baby, you're the hospital, right? Um, so we, we deal with a lot of challenging questions and challenging persons that come to our court. But it's, it's taken us about seven months, we finally have a really solid customer experience with the defendant. Um, I know some people don't agree that court is a customer service area, but I do believe it is because they don't deserve to understand what our theory. They don't deserve to understand what their rights are and what their options are. And it's our job to explain that to them. Now, Cal may know, if he gets a speeding ticket, that he has an option for a driver's safety course or for a deterrent, depending on where he got the ticket, how fast he was going, there's a million criteria, right? But, not that you would have, have a council member come, but you may not. But not that you would have, have counsel ever come, but you may not, you may not know that. Um, you may get them in here and not understand that this is your third ticket for court ticket, and you may lose your driving, your license, or suspend it. So it's our job to educate, okay? And I really take that strongly, uh, to heart with our staff. Our other job is to actually provide twenty-four seven hours of defense. Um, our city and the court is in high technology wise. When I first came in, we didn't offer, um, they, everybody had their report. Every single person had his own report. Well, and they had to come back three to four times, depending on what their criteria was. We didn't have any way for them to process something. Well, imagine if he got his meeting ticket and he's gotta come back three times. That's three times you might need to name your job, right? I mean, or maybe they're giving them, or maybe you don't have a bar, like, you're having to get a lot of work. Um, so we have come up with a couple of temporary solutions. Um, we do have chaos that's not from a report. Um, and we have two that we ordered and learned and solved. We have, we have had a lecture put in and all kinds of different things to give those emotional inside. But they are, they are tested and ready to go. And they have not been proven yet, okay? Um, we're dealing with, um, our tower technologies, our, our, our pace management system. Um, and we're currently in the process of trying to work with them to give us more access to more data. Um, they don't wanna lose the payment processing costs that they're gaining two dollars and fifty cents per transaction. So they're not being as, depending on make back, they're working with them on that. Um, and then they do have another platform that they do have installed that will allow them to do things every month, which is our goal. Um, we still work depending on that platform, we could process anything, it would totally work out. Um, but it will take, we know it's working on that platform now, and we should have to let it settle. So, um, that's my hope. Now, I did come up with a really cool thing, if you really wanna see it, you have to be in the system. Um, I did, I did produce two platforms that do give you access. So this is the attorney office that finally loves to love it. So I don't have to go over to the defense attorney, but, um, they love it because they people wanna pull their case up for a bit. They don't have to call the board. They can see what the status is, how much money is owed. They're preventing them from wanting to make payment, you know, so that the attorney doesn't have to take the money and then pay the court. So they really have gotten excited. We, um, we rolled it out to the new January. So they're using it quite a bit now. We now have years and many people calling the court. It helps reduce our traffic. Um, I'm gonna talk a teeny bit about staff, because I know you guys probably like members of the community, so I can't see without them, several. Um, our facility is probably our greatest challenge. Um, our building was built in nineteen eighty-four. We have suicide victims, we have five bloody incidents, I guess there's a way, I don't know what a big way to replace it. Um, our, our carpets were, were getting in black, it was literally crazy. So, um, we do, I want you to continue the court, and we're working on it right now. We just finished all our floors. We repainted it. We don't have, um, torn off baseboards anymore. So actually, it looks clean and nice underlapping, but it, it makes a huge morale difference. My staff are taking ownership. We didn't have a refrigerator in the court. I mean, and it sounds like a simple piece, but my staff, they made sixteen an hour, okay? So probably on sixteen dollars an hour, and they have to remember much. So we needed a refrigerator in the kitchen. Um, the other thing is, um, I took one of the old spaces. Um, we took, um, we got a huge, I don't even know, not documents, but just, uh, and build it. Um, sanitation laws, the dumpster, we did a huge clean project. Um, and it looked so much better. I mean, and it makes the defendants look better, it makes the employees look better. And I'm proud of what we've done. It's only been a year, but we're making new progress. And defendants constantly tell us, it looks like a real home now, right? Um, the only challenge we have right now, basically, is between fifty-two and sixty degrees at the court. Um, we don't have a boiler, and we need new air ductors. I know that's in the process, but, um, we can't run our teams because we don't have enough electricity in the building, um, for antrage. I'm not really an electrician. So we have five, it's five small heaters that I put in the court just to try to keep the defendants. We have a older, ready, blue fingers in the lobby. We never sit so cold. And, um, it keeps shirving the, the switches or the power. So I don't know what we're gonna do about that. I don't know what I got from our, on Monday, but we're, we've gotta come up with a solution on hold. Um, but other than that, we are, um, we're down to reset them first, um, which is not for bad, compared to what it's been. But anybody in my department can go to any other department in the city and make more money. I pay the loads. And we are required to read and pass a test, the first level, um, for junior, first two years, you have to pass a one thousand page textbook to work in the title. And a ticket can go a hundred and seventy-six square meters. Do you know that? Believe it or not, there's that many variances. So we have to try and get someone that can go anywhere else, and you're not gonna be able to at all. You know what I mean? Or have a nasty phone call. So, um, it's really hard for retention. We're trying to, I bring goodies for them, I try to do everything at the end, be positive. Um, we give each other speaking notes and try to make it positive, and we have an over ten majority of our staff at least the last few months. So, um, we're down to, we need them to have a pretty word up. Um, when I first came here, I thought it was gonna be, um, a really small court. Um, you know, it's not gonna be that big. I married a West Texas boy, uh, four years ago. So that's how I ended up in West Texas, um, North Texas, so, um, but I really, this is home now. We bought a home, um, starting to play golf here, we're fitting into this community. Um, and I take it for as many ladies as we can get out of this, I could really, um, when they make, when they say, no, no good things. It's not because this is a great place. I came here to make a difference. I came here because I want defendants to understand their rights. I want to do a good job for the city, and I want to try to build a reputation. I don't want to come and make a reputation. Um, I, I feel passionately about that. When I came here, well, we were, I'm done, okay?
All right. It's like, excellent.
I'm sorry?
Excellent presentation.
Yes.
You're very legit, I love that.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for me? Do you wanna know about our case filings or anything? Any questions that I need to ask? Our revenue number, I only give one revenue number. Um, our gross revenue receipts, I'm sorry, for this past year, four million, three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. Um, our maturation, which is the glitter rest, we did four thousand, one hundred and forty cases. Um, we had processed twenty thousand, two hundred and ninety-nine cases from eleven different agencies. Um, and we cleared thirty-four thousand, eight hundred and thirty cases. We're really working on our backlog. Um, but I just wanted to give you that, um, little quick information. And we need a judge. We need a judge. We need an associate judge desperately. We have not had an associate judge since July. Um, and so our case, our revenues are, are really effective, and you can see that as it's trending down. We can run eighty dockets, uh, for one quarter, but I only have one quarter. Is that a second quarter?
I believe you have a question, but...
Yeah. Just curious, is there, uh, possibly the alternative clue, the parking meters that we have around now?
No.
I mean, no question.
No, we do the filing. So they do file parking tickets with us, and that's another whole story. I mean, it's actually, we've done, we've got our, we've got our process, we've got our places for that. But we do process parking tickets, from a lot of us.
So, so, I guess, so, we need to...
Yes, so, then you talk, so this is not... Nobody has any kind of questions for court? I know you guys love this court.
Thank you so much.
Okay, y'all have a question?
First, I have a mark, thank you, bro. It's part of the...
I want to speak. Where's it at, John Rogers?
Good morning, Mary Council. Um, John Rogers, definitely, definitely the resident of the city of Memphis for, I mean, two years, first one. Um, previously, I was also previously at work for the city of Memphis for, I thought, fourteen years. Uh, she got started with the park department of operations. Um, during that time, I, uh, during that time, I completed the TJ's, uh, professional management program, reflecting in the TJ. And prior to that, um, I was back in the neighborhood and supported back, uh, the high school through state national care. So all, all accomplishments in the process. Uh, the parks overview, uh, purpose of the parks department, uh, the park recreation is to function with communities and maintain accessible parks dedicated to, to provide the quality of life for citizens and pedestrians. Uh, we have thirty-six parks, they've total four hundred and sixty-eight acres, six community centers, a disc golf course, a recital, and just like that. Uh, the service center program is to provide, uh, built community center for living animals. We also have programs throughout the year. Uh, we also host several panels, uh, for S A P's, uh, called festival tree hunting and star righting. Uh, we, a core part of our department is community engagement. We have partnerships with Odessa Soccer Association, going by Little League, Sherwood Little League, and Parker Little League, uh, Odessa Dumb Soccer and Boys and Girls Club of Odessa. Uh, we also cooperate from a business with special music, uh, singing the Bible Day, as well as several prayer, West Texas events, uh, for children with special needs. Our challenges are maintenance needs, managing infrastructure. Uh, for our biggest engine challenge is staffing load. Uh, we currently have zero employees in the recreation department. We have, uh, we are team plus employees short due on resiliency management proof. Uh, due to the staffing levels, we're challenged with higher kinds of daily tasks and projects. Currently, we have several projects that remain on hold as our team has been fully focused on meeting deadlines for both the installation and removal of presence displayed. Uh, the, the projects that are on hold currently are the Sherwood Research Park, uh, park logging, draw and installation, and mapping of archery inventory of G I S. Uh, upcoming plans and projects include playground, uh, some monoliner replacement, addition of park restroom, uh, maintenance relations to all the park systems, addition of lights, uh, at parks and walking trails, uh, toilet bowl repair and the game's flash pad repair, addition to shade protection for trees throughout the parks and walking trails. Um, additionally, we have the sports builds, uh, based on our park matching plan, which we have. Um, we need the addition of seven softball fields, ten baseball softball practice fields, four non-football fields, and six multi-use soccer and football fields. Our, our golf operation, that back of the ranch, the purpose is to provide a comprehensive and global gaming experience for all ages to go at this court with practice. Um, we can also enhance community engagement, generate revenue, maintain court equality. Uh, the facility includes a baking hall, TJ recognized shop course, a full with gathering, traffic funding group, and a private shopping group. We have a fully stocked pro shop and a full-service restaurant that provides junk food, beverage, uh, beverage park, and a golf cart fleet, a seventy-five cart, uh, that are available for him for daily playing and training. Uh, events and programs are a key part of the golf operation. Uh, tournaments held around the benefit local organizations who are supporting the scholarship and charities, and other local entities which all get back to the community. We also host internal events such as a parent trial of Odessa City Championship. Uh, another key part of the events and programs are instructions. Uh, we offer individual group lessons as well as old four-team drop games, one ladies, forty-four years. Uh, content is also available, and, uh, those opportunities are for all skill levels and support accessibility, including as a low, up, and along the community. Uh, projects and plans of the golf course, we simply included projects including installation of a new compound, control panel, and multi, uh, new pump, a coordination system, uh, and addition of frames and, and desert saving home report, uh, and the driver's equipment. Okay, uh, I'm gonna conclude with, I'm gonna conclude with, talking about the revenue, financial, uh, it's important that, that I don't know that. Um, for physical, you're twenty twenty-four, your first time in facility history, uh, we did the court operational circle. Um, so key metrics, overall, but they're all records for the facility, the history, and revenue. Uh, total rounds of forty, over forty-seven thousand compared to thirty-five thousand the year before. And, uh, total revenue was a little over two point six million compared to one point eight million of the previous year. Uh, forty-five percent year over year in three years.
Any questions?
I'm listening, definitely, but how many could be down to?
So total for the department, uh, did a quarter fifteen, like, over fifteen.
Is that the accumulation mainly in part to...
Uh, I would definitely contribute that to, um, our team, our frequency for staffing is the recreational part. Uh, not running, anybody in that department puts a string on, uh, scheduling, planning, uh, every part of our operation.
So some of these basic conditions you're hearing about are, were identified as budget, funding, and stuff. So some of these things are on a money basis. Not as well all that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, so, appreciate it.
Chief Kirkie, police department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What do I have to say? I am like, he, uh, been employed with the city of Odessa, Odessa Police Department for twenty-seven and a half years. I started here as a police officer. I've held every rank except for recruit, although I've, uh, I've done every job at this department except for hang line in our pocket. Other than that, I've set every, every unit. We are a full service department. By that, I mean, we provide our head agents, SWAT, to control, to detectives, to narcotics, to the crisis negotiation, G O V, which is long as well, our SWAT team deals with regional asset, uh, G O V's, uh, team is a regional asset. And our C N T uses, our crisis negotiation uses a regional asset. But even by that, we always, we call to Monahan, to, to encourage trade outline, to junction, uh, being placed in. So we, we are a full service, regional asset. One of the things I'm, uh, which extremely proud, I, I, I'm a partner of a training, uh, facility, and the training that happens there. A normal police academy gives nine hundred and eighty hours, and in three hours, we provide about twelve hundred dollars in our debt. Uh, and because we believe that our officers, before they hit the street, need that extra training. That, that training academy, uh, in, 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 you, in particular, also hosts tons of other training. We've had, uh, our trainings are so often for, recently, we've had people who have struggled, uh, in training at our, uh, team. We're collaborating, we're not, we're not, again, very strong relationships, uh, and work. Uh, we actually work with cash wars, they're not trying to cash wars, which has been extremely successful in the last thirty-four years, been worse. On day to day for the Moon County, the Thicker County, for D E A, with F B I, with T S I, with T P S. And we've had a couple of years, we've had a very strong relationship with T P S, the party office, which has been very, um, very good results. Getting, um, bomb offenders off this year in a very quick manner. So staff, let's talk about staff. Uh, I think that's where everybody, uh, they can have, they can, that's where it goes to the law. So current, we have one hundred and twenty-three search files. We have thirteen academies that sort of, and we have three, um, already lined up for our, we're adding them. So, uh, as, uh, if you look at our license numbers, uh, license numbers at one forty-five. So from what we hit, one twenty-three, um, plus thirteen in the academy, uh, plus a three, uh, we're getting close to that number. Now, we're talking about that license number, that, that license number, what would be, uh, probably forty-four years ago, that license number would have been two. So that's gone down. What happened to that number? Well, um, one year, uh, six positions, that. Last year, I changed the bill of capital and asked if we could use those positions, because I can get freezers for the others. That paid off. And I'll tell you why that paid off. Last year, we lost ten search files. Six of those search files, ten right because of retirement. You know, I can't blame people for leaving when they're done, twenty-five, thirty years, that anyone's a full fella. I get it, but I absolutely get it. Two of the remaining four left because they were in the list of their partners, uh, that was right on the wall, and they left because of that. Took the other, one of the other two left because, uh, she no longer wanted to be a police officer, she wanted to be a full-time mom. Uh, and the other one left because of a supposed condition. None of those officers left and wanted to work for the law. So what, what are we trying to kind of make up that, that difference? We've invested in technology, and that's really paid off. So our license plate readers, we have, okay, thirty license plate readers around town, those are enforced, those are amazing. We have, we're a video channel around town, we have. We have NITE, which is National Intervention Leadership Network. So we're the only, one, we're the only department that's breathing, had that. We have broken that up to other departments, and we, we act, we'll be one thousand percent believe that aren't regional, so therefore, we have to fight it. So that's why we partner and collaborate with the, with the several departments. And so NITE is basically what CSI is, and those types of things. It's where you come to those bullets and showcase and you match them. And if we move forward, there's going to be a technology, there's going to be, that cost, as little as possible. One other success that I would like to bring out is, again, with cooperation, we are. So after all this effort, we ended up, set up, and I, I'm chief of, they registered, we take care of each other. So we've laid out a plan. And that plan is finally coming to fruition. So in, in Edgar County, we have a regular system, that's owned by City Odessa, to power our own life. Where in every first responder in this county, we can't necessarily speak seamlessly. Milton County recently put in a system, I think they went live in, in October, where the D, where Milton County now has that ability to speak with everybody in this county. Except for Milton D, Milton D went live in November, so now they get it. Our hope at the funding and the process is more recent than proof, is that people find work, and use the one hour course, so we create a new system. And have everyone in both counties be able to, and capture the software community, so we can.
Thank you, Chief. Has always intimidated because of the offices heavily. Any questions?
This probably hasn't come up yet, but it should be, if you're aware of it. We had a hundred and two offering pledges, our population is five hundred or less. Right. Through the election, you can talk a lot. You're one of those statisticians that help with that, and they claim, for them, that I'm leading, probably at least a hundred, you did town, you did town, a hundred fifteen thousand on the, on the. They're telling me, we probably have close to a hundred fifty plus, plus we have Russian Destin some other areas. At another fifty to a hundred thousand. So every given day, in this city, we need to have more than people, we have enough officers. So I guess my question is. The budget last year, it seems like to me, listening to you try, get back to the money, do more based on the population, is that fair?
I, I think that's fair, but I think the other thing you can't remember about that is when I hired an officer, it's a big experience for that officer. If you hire a recruit, they still have to sort of like, they have to rock out, and then we're trying to put the house, they have to ask us, they price me. And then we put down a few, we're ready to go, so we did it to the extent of our. A hundred and twenty-three. And you, literally, they. It's a decision, it's a matter of, so imagine number after hundred. That happened before.
One of them is winter water, they just run off.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, we appreciate that.
Public Safety Communications, Michelle Rock.
Today, Councilwoman, I heard, one of them was in the ministry, he, we had a voice signal, if he was going to be long-winded, I would blow him a kiss, and then he'd keep it short, silly, so. As I said, I'm a Public Safety Communications Director, I'm also the tax, criminal agency coordinator. The Lasso, which stands for Local Agency Security Officer, an associate trainer for TCIC, TLETS, Chief Holby Safety Instructor, and ICAAS Administrator, which stands for Integrated Public Alert Warning System. So I oversee kind of all that. I have a style of seventeen dispatchers for admin and two part-time currently. Yes, like everyone, we're short staffed, I would like to have six per shift, so we ultimately are seven. Dispatchers down, ultimately would be great to have seven dispatchers working a shift, so that'd be eleven now for that. In September twenty nineteen, the Great State Texas Classified Us, the first responders, and we kind of overlooked it that time because of, you know, August thirty-first. Our community was devastated, so, but we are proud to be considered first responders, we're not secretarial, although the nation classifies us because we do so much more than just answer the phone. We are the P S A for the county, which is the public safety entering point, meaning all nine-one-one calls from the county coming into our center. We answer all non-emergency lines, fire and animal control, after hours, weekends, we answer for the rest of the departments that are on call. We also dispatch services, calls for service for fire, E M F, police, and animal control. We also manage the TLETS, TCIC system, and run people and property to see if wanted or stolen. And we enter all reports that need to be entered into the state and federal systems, and in a timely manner. The only thing really that affected us when the network was down, entering those reports in a timely manner because we had to go to Midland to get those reports entered, because our system was down. But we, our system's been down sporadically, our CAT system, over the years, so we have a good backup system, it's called paper, old school. We have forms to fill out, it's just when the system came back, we had to enter all those reports in the system. This past year, through the ARPA funds, banking council for awarding us that, we were able to purchase a new CAT system, which is considered a new dispatch. And hopefully by June, we will have that new system in place, and that should be working better. Now, this system is also the system that the sheriff's office also has implemented, and they, that's the first time they ever had a CAT system. Now, the good thing about this CAT system, we can talk to each other, they see what calls we have, and we see what calls they have. Midland is also looking at the same system, so we will be able to, not just on radios communicate, but they can see visually what everybody's doing. So if we have another active shooter, we can see where everybody's going. And. See, some of us are also part of the police peer support team, there's four of us, because we believe in our health, it is very important. And we constantly are making sure everybody's okay, even if one person is affected by a call, or the whole shift was affected by a call, or the whole center was affected by a call. We want to make sure they're okay. And as far as needs, of course, staffing, and what would work best for us is definitely move to a staff plan. Part of our problem in hiring people, of course, we have to go through the same process as a board police officer, except we don't do the agility test, we take the current test, we sit. So it's a long hiring process, it can take up to two to two and a half months to get someone hired. And then it goes through the training, certifications, licensing, stuff, so they don't have a viable employee from the date they're hired until like six months into the job. And then we train up, we have dispatcher one, dispatcher two, dispatcher three. So every time I'm trained up, they get a pay raise, they learn more about what the center does, so they might start as a call taker, just taking calls. We can see how that is overwhelming, just in that twelve hours a day. So we want to train them up so they can have a little variety, they're on the radio sometimes, sometimes they're running people, and then we also take a phone call, so a little variety, so it's not so stressful on them. And with the staff plan that I proposed, is taking away the one to three title, and it's just dispatcher and dispatcher nine. So when we want to train them up, we have that position, and it's just that they, you know, eventually we'll have a pay increase on that, because they're already initially at the pay increase part of the paper, that position itself. And we had integrated trainers in a position, in a training position for that.
Questions, Department?
We're all here.
We are in Municipal Plaza, yes, it is an old building. That is another thing that's a need, and most rare for it to rain, and for it to rain only during the weekend. So when it does, it's easy to build it, and we're having to quickly put paper towels in the windowsills and long enough area so the water will not be in too much, and that's several minutes. And you can visit us anytime. Older than me.
It was a bank in the eighties. It was a bank in the eighties.
Thank you. All right? Joe Tucker with Public Works?
Thank you. Just a little bit about maybe some of the known stuff, but my background, I've become a career engineer, I've been doing land development for nearly four years. Both on the public side and private side, working as consultants, but that's where I come from. Now I'm in public, but it's, and giving streets and traffic to the city of Odessa. Our engineering department handles multiple things. We look after all the railways in town, actually, in permanent, new inspections, we're a little bit of a railway. We look at all the construction projects going on in town, which is state projects, and I did all the subdivisions going in, we're situated in that. We see all the acts, where they're building, that comes through. We are the floodplain administrators, anything going on in the floodplain, people don't realize, we do have a floodplain here in the mountains. But that one day a year, we get flooded, and that's, that's part of what we do, is make sure when that event does happen, that we're prepared. That's kind of our engineering department, also we have our traffic department, not can you get into detail, but. Can we jump to traffic, which is basically separated in two components. We have crews that handle signs and striping, which is just maintaining all city signs, stop signs, yield, plus the surface striping you see on the other ways. The other component of traffic is the crews handling all our traffic signals. They're a little more technical, they care the boxes, keep everything running, they respond to signals going down. The tech ones in the middle of the night, we've got crews out there to handle that pretty often. The third division we have is streets. Our street department handles maintenance of streets, building, property, maintaining hours. That can tear drainage from the city as our drainage, which is in town, we take care of. Street sweepers, we're not bad with whatever personnel, because that's an issue. Boarding that unsafe structures, we do all that cleaning, home, etc. lots, we take care of that as we respond, we work on. One of the big topics to this happening. We have eight positions, twenty-five of them. Majority of that is probably in, we have done some restructuring, work for the back end, and the job was restructured, some of those positions. And it's helped, but we're still, we still have issues, one issue is, well, I'm putting that switch, we've got five positions, one is, so we've got one guy covering the city of Odessa.
Point, thanks, Danny, time for your morning rush.
Part of the problem is our, our trucks, our C D L. If we find the driver with a C D L, we can't pay him well. So we're working on, as we purchase new trucks, they will be a smaller vehicle, and we'll acquire a C D L. So that we have solutions that, but we're not there yet. Staffing is, you have twenty-five older positions, other positions. Issue that I have that's unique to me, I would say, is the zero budget. I don't have, most public works projects don't start and end in a fiscal year. So when I hit the end of the year and lose my money, I'm not done with that project. So for that reason, we'll see new county council a couple of times this year, asking for general fund money, because the money I had last year, that I was using for a project, that I assigned for a project, now reverted back to general fund. Money didn't go away, I just don't have it in my budget. Because of the zero. So that's an issue that we.
Questions?
Comment. I'm gonna do that in my, my data, but I would say the work from different governments and the report, all these, that's part of nutrition, so I'll lose that work, I'll take a work. Does not design for government, government will. So get rid of that work and go.
There's probably a lot of, this is years.
Absolutely, yes.
I remember the war, I guess about thirty years ago. Well, I have a deep question, you said in the middle of that, why have we done that? There's a lot of that, are those self recording, are they citizens?
They are not.
So you're not self recording?
And we get a call, we expect to, and we don't care about it, usually it's just a power, a power on your street, that's the system now, it's usually something, something.
Thank you, Dr. Decker.
I have one question.
Do you have something?
Joe, I've heard about annual asset, I think, working road, we call it, you know, I have, we have a year, prison, and he says, I feel like you're bored, but all of my organization, with member of the tax code, Joe says on that, I'm on board, the technical, advising, P seven, so we don't need to watch the front. So the biggest thing to do, council, each, you know, Mr. Stoker, I think you got a hard going paper this morning, you want to understand the streets in town, with Forty-Second Street, West County Road, there's twenty, those are free, those are day, those are all tax code, people don't seem to understand that, and that's the reason we have the, you know, Joe and I, a lot of the city of Odessa, into that organization, which pays for the overpasses that we put in, they pay for a credit, so you have, well, I present, when everybody saw it. Tax code, we responsible for putting a bunch of demons down, on Second Street, turn down, slow down the traffic, and it's five burning lights. And that is hard in, if government moves slow, that could have went down, you know, three years ago, and it was on there, out of our job, so.
We made that, Jim.
We made that body. Yeah, what we did is get rid of those support checks, before the money come, the money went to the, you know. So it's important to understand that not only are we involved in the city planning, but also the region, the tax law, the city's, that's why.
And you mentioned projects. I, we, in public works, people running list of city street projects that we feel need to be restructured. And we appreciate your input on any of those as well. It's probably forty streets wrong. We just recently drove through one of them and graded them, so we can kind of keep up with our front working list. But forty streets, when we're actually budgeting for two to three a year, is going to work. So that's, that's just the reality of the situation.
Oh, wait, question. Do we go to internal or do you have a report, you know, every paper?
It's all done, it's, we don't have the staff that do the internal design. So it's, kind of.
And just by, so that's why I, a little intersection there in front of the, several areas, they're the eighth and second street. You all just need to remember that you let Joe know, you know, whatever, you know, he's racing that, we have all the kids sitting down, they yell, we, Eric, that's a, you're there. We met, you're there, because of that whole question. Anybody done for us for a couple weeks?
Yes, we did, yeah. We added to their project and they assumed the cost of it. We've done, done our tax cuts down.
The money out there, right? It's not second street, I mean, it's scheduled to be, you know, probably.
That will be the first team to come to that. And I'll probably have more than that in a few years. Um, for the benefits team, there was a position, um, and I want to say it was the plant process. When that person left and kind of at the first order of last year, um, I did, I chose not to fill that role because I didn't think once we stand up a new team, that will need that position. Um, and then we have a benefits customer service, um, position. That's now vacant. I will move that role over to support the lack of working compensation. Because they don't have administrative support. Um, so I want to talk to you a little bit about some of the things that we're planning for this year. So I've talked about concession planning. We'll also be saying about standing up our safety training platform. Um, it will be new for us and we have a lot of work to do around that. Um, I've shared that we'll be trained, um, we'll be working with the team to develop them, get them ready to manage benefits in the way that they should be. And then, um, one of the things that we have planned, we haven't talked about yet out loud to a number of people is to consolidate the occupational employer requirements that we have. So this is like fitness for duty type stuff or when, um, a particular type role needs an immunization. And so right now it's spread out in the organization. Some of the stuff is with, with management, some with HR. And, um, we think it would be a good idea to consolidate those functions. One of the big challenges we have is police with their L three exams that are required. This is the psychological exam. There's only really one real medical resource here. So we've been trying to talk with our mentors about trying to get that because it delays them in making their hires. Um, you've heard a number of people talk about their L three, right? Leaking, um, visible problems. They have a whole bunch of stuff going on. For Station Nine, um, roof is leaking. Um, so there's a lot of, um, things around our property that we need to get our hands on, handle. So I requested as a part of the budget to do a property valuation. Hasn't been done over ten years. Um, the money was budgeted. I'll begin working on that RFP properly, um, if they're telling me for it. Everything we're matched about being right and going with them, right? So at the tail end of this quarter, I'll begin to work on that. Um, but, and we'll have to come up with a strategy and when our, how we'll do the valuation. It's too costly to try to do everything up ones. So of course we'll, um, look at the, the biggest buildings first, um, before we move forward. But we'll have a strategy to be able to do that property valuation and then go on.
Can you order your note? I don't know. No, 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 I'll let you go ahead. I'll let everybody just ask their time as they fit. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
I want to know what, what we're going to do next. Uh, I know you, you were saying we have work from solid waste utilities, but they're on the agenda. So we're going to move into those. We will be breaking at noon for lunch. Is that correct? Yeah. So, um, why don't we go ahead and move into the update of utilities with Alex Burnlet? Uh, and realize that we have, uh, thirty four minutes before, or approximately. Or if you're practicing with on me and said, okay, we're good.
I don't know. I was thinking, I was wondering. I wasn't able to get my utilities updated the last time, so I think we're going to move into that. And I'm going to add a little bit extra stuff to it. And I'm assuming that you guys are going to have a lot of until I do. Let's go ahead and get into it. The City of Lavezas Utility Department focuses on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital for, for, to a sustainable and resilient community and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of our citizens. The utilities department is composed of five divisions, UT, Administration, Water, Climate, and Plan, Life and Service, Distribution and Collection, and the Bob Derrington Wastewater Association. Our objectives are to provide good drinkable water to citizens of Lavezas, minimize utility service interruptions to our citizens, and maintain both the water and wastewater infrastructure. Uh, I'm going to move into UT Admin. Uh, UT Admin handles the administrative aspects of the utilities department, which includes mapping, contracts, data, engineering, and construction. We were also financing legal and city management as we initiate the budget for occupation, contract initiation, and monitoring. Currently in the UT Admin Department, uh, we have three vacancies. We have a state specialist, uh, we have a project coordinator vacancy, and a G I S vacancy. There are other future needs that we look into the future to see. Uh, with part of the new EPA TCU chief of youth requirements, uh, we're looking at adding another compliance coordinator. Uh, this would be leading a new officer in the compliance department to give us a water division and compliance officer. And, uh, and then with State and Cyber Security, uh, detailed in what we do. Uh, we're also going to look into state support. Apparently those are the future needs and then some of the vacancies. Uh, within this department, we do, uh, handle most projects. Uh, so I am going to go through certain projects that we currently have. Uh, these are not all the projects within our department, so they just, um, have to handle in the future. So currently we are doing a water line replacement and manual replacement of tank drain. Uh, they're also, uh, seeing in, in joint with public works, uh, where they would be researched in the road. We're currently, right now, I have this twenty-one in my packet. We're currently at thirty-three. We just had a new pay application for my product, so that's in the form. We're currently thirty-three percent. Uh, that's a ten million dollar, almost eleven million dollar budget cost, uh, depending on any change orders here. Uh, we're currently working on the UConn compensation. Uh, this is in our master plan. Uh, this is a compensation for the Northside account that feeds Rainbow Tower. Uh, that is a ten million dollar project. Uh, we are ahead of schedule, like I said. Uh, but we are a little bit ahead of schedule. Uh, we're, uh, we are twenty-six percent overall with that. Uh, it is the tank. If you're willing to put two extra million gallons or add it, uh, it's forty-eight percent done and then underground piping around half is twenty-one percent. Uh, that should be done by summertime, into the summertime of, of four. We're working on a water beer change out program, which everybody knows about. Uh, so currently right now, we're sixty percent, so we have a change out sixty percent a year. Uh, we locate finishing that October twenty twenty-five, uh, to budget, most of this is very. Well, we have a second street area line, uh, sewer line pocket. Uh, it is a main transmission line that runs over in the drawing and draw. Uh, we currently have an issue with council, uh, it's deemed that it has an emergency. Uh, the design is, uh, ninety percent complete. We just have to move that on Thursday. But to review this design, uh, and so we should be able to move that fairly quickly due to the fact that it is an emergency, uh, so I don't think we have to have the RFP or anything like that. But it should be very quickly. Uh, the valve assessment, this is one of our biggest projects currently. Uh, it's going to entail a lot of this stuff going forward. With this valve assessment, we're assessing thirteen, around a little over thirteen thousand valves. There is, we're talking, we will discuss where we're at with that, what employees, what we found, uh, and certain things like that. Uh, we're currently, we're more than twenty-nine, uh, but it looks like we're going to finish in August of twenty twenty-five. And just the assessment is, uh, many dollars. Currently right now, we are looking at coming under budget, uh, about eight hundred thousand. Uh, I do look at having them take that extra money and helping us fix certain issues with valves, small hugs, things like that. Not replacing any valves, but maybe if we could be thoughtful with that. Oh, we have a risk and resilience assessment for our water treatment plants. Uh, we're, we're working on a contract with somebody. It's an actual update that we do every five years. Uh, and the EPA actually came out to our side, uh, did a visit with us. Uh, everything went fairly well. And they're happy with everything that they had done five years previously. And they're very happy with that. They are just small updates that we have to do since we are making, uh, since we do have that completion project, construction part of the year. Uh, kind of your west one, I'm going to start from the eighty-five hundred foot. Uh, I wanted to cancel last time to inform you that this upcoming week, uh, we will be moving forward with the contract in Parkville. Uh, so we budgeted seven million for that. Uh, so it is in progress down there. They are also going to replace the road that we're working in, and we're going to do a location and, uh, and, uh, try to do that so we're not taking up a road path. Uh, and then another water line project that we do have on the books is a plant that, uh, that is actually almost through with design. Uh, had a new design, which is extraordinary, given over the Joe and his team over engineering, that's a comment. Uh, so that's actually the designs are almost done there. After that, we'll, we'll put it out. So that is another huge water line replacement. And part of this line is in ninety percent. Uh, there's also seven million, but. Uh, the tower valve replacement, we are currently now more than twenty-five percent. Uh, we have three of the five valves installed. Apparently right now that tower does not have any water in it, but we are in construction. Everything in the line, first of all, we're not without that tower, uh, first of all, we're here now. We're looking at about another two weeks to get that replaced, get it in there, and then that, uh, tower will be off. So next thought is working on a mandated, uh, fire hydrant replacement to the city. So we, we, this contract that we paid for, we all have to give it first for a small, uh, six fire hydrant. It should be done by the end of this month, uh, and then. Uh, we did a odor control study with our Derrington plant. This was to help us understand where we were with H U S J apps in our infrastructure. It was nearly out of me. It was good to know where we're at, which will then help us move into the Derrington rehab. We're working on currently. And then our lead and cover, this is something that has enough to light this, this plug machine. So we are incorporating that into our meter change out program, which then when they change their meters, then they report back to the plug, the line is copper red, galvanized, anything like that. We do have all of that set up on our website that customers and residents can go in and figure out. If they're lead operating, like that, they also look to do a city side check and anything that is on the city side. Uh, future needs with that. Yes.
To get on the same page.
Yes, sir.
Finish to completion here is that, so by the way, if this were, is that the date from start to finish, we're twenty-five percent of the way to the date, is that the budget or is that?
Construction or whatever means. If this is not pay application, I mean, none of these, uh, well, let me rephrase. The train water line is paid. So that is that they are ready to complete, not with a pay out.
So speaking of that, working, uh, how can they do that in a way?
Okay. So pay application, we pay on certain, uh, however we decide to structure the project. So when they deliver, they, they deliver two thousand feet of line, we pay upon that. Sometimes depending on, depending on materials, anything mobilization, anything like that that has been delivered, decided to pay for that. And also pay for construction and pay for critical materials. Sometimes concrete, like the larger treatment plant, sort of say construction concrete is a huge portion of the project. Compared to maybe this data or some other aspect. So, uh, most of these are going to be the top, it's mostly construction. Well, well, none of it's construction, uh, other than train water line and UConn. So the twenty-six is the overall on the UConn component that has to be managed. So if most of it is an overall understanding of not just construction, but also other aspects. Maybe we're adding pump on the UConn station, uh, and then electricity that has to be built into that also. It's an overall action, but, but some, some things do have the pay application, but mostly that's just the train water lines. I, I under, I under. Any other questions? For the future needs for this, uh, we are looking at having to do the, the train, uh, project as a, uh, it was only the water line and the sewer manhole. Uh, before the project, uh, they did not include the line itself. So we are going to align that one. So we had to clean the camera. Uh, when we started working on the project for water, we had found that somebody had dumped in about fifteen pounds of concrete into a manhole, and hardened in the line. So that has accumulated into our sewer line system. So what we had to do was do a form repair, fix it. Once we were able to fix that, we have now been able to camera clean the line. The line is fine, uh, instead of doing a replacement. Uh, so we are going to do the lining for about somewhere between seventy and seventy-five. We did have somebody come in close to do a repair and a replace, uh, and that would have been somewhere close to about three million dollars. So we were able to clean the line, but it was here. That will happen after the project. Uh, the northeast two million gallon proposed elevated tower, uh, that is one of our future needs for our system. Uh, it is currently on hold right now. However, we obviously finished. Uh, but that is in one of our master plan margins, uh, for the next five years. And in the past, that's going to be flat spot.
Alex, will that matter with your just discussing? What was the funding agency, the name of the funding?
Texas Water Development Board.
Yeah.
So there are two options to go, to go to C O or pretty much go to X R.
But once the audit is completed and confirmed, verified, whatever, you can reapply for that?
Yes. And it's still on hold. Hopefully you should have to reapply and go with the management. There is an option that by the time I've been talking about, about coming to C O after that, well, these are related to the application. Uh, but I, I don't think that it's something we probably have to stick with the Water Development Board to get it.
That's good. Thank you.
Uh, something else that we're looking into is due to the fact that Derrington is in the shape that it is. And, uh, we're, we're really needing a manhole and sewer line assessment on the larger lines that are incoming to the plant, other than line K and line B, which were done in the past couple of years, which are brand new. Uh, but we are having a weird disaster coming into the plant, which is then eroding most of our larger lines and manholes, especially where our transmission line is. So that, that really needs to be handled, uh, in a timely manner so we can make sure we get a grip on what actually coming into this new, new iteration base and kind of looking at. Uh, Forty Second Street, that is one of our main, uh, water line issues that we have had over the past years. Uh, we have pushed the county request project before that, uh, due to already having some of the portions of Forty Second Street already handled and already changed, uh, but there still are some cast iron issues within those sections that we need to, uh, very seriously look at before. And then nicely, uh, valve replacement program. Uh, this valve replacement program will happen after we assess, get a full assessment of the valves that we currently have in the city. Uh, we need to structure something that is going to replace critical valves first. And then after critical valves, then assess how we can change or replace valves in our larger banner in neighborhoods. Communication line.
Any question on that? You mentioned earlier about G I S, or the valves in G I S.
Yeah. So I've been working with that here and I've been working with the team. Uh, so when we get to, uh, the distribution part, I have to put in, uh, where they, we gave hydro maps to our lender, our G I S system, and they took everything from that, put it in there. And they're updating as they go, so they tell us terms. Anything that has to do with that valve broken, that stuff, we're going to intern and implement that back in. So I had time to talk on the take here about how we can actually go in and change their on map, red, broken, all sorts of things. But we have a really good vision and plan for when we get on with this doubt, uh, to be able to put that in. Uh, let's move on to water treatment. The City of Lavezas Water Treatment Plant is designed to purify and supply clean, safe water for human consumption, zephar use, and ventilation. Its primary purpose is to remove contaminants, contaminants, and impurities from our raw water source from the yard living. The water plant is careful for public health, economic activity, and maintaining the water's path. The water treatment plant is operated twenty-four hours a day, fifty-five days. We deliver and average of twenty-five million gallons of water to, uh, per day, to a. Uh, it does fluctuate in the summer time. Uh, we can get anywhere from thirty-two million, uh, and I don't like that now. Until we get done with the head and headway, and it really is a way to cover it for. In the summer time, it does get very hot. Now, right now, in the winter time, we're pushing the air temperature to eighty. Currently right now, we have two plant operator vacancies. Uh, and then our future needs are two extra operators and one administrator. We're generally going to admin over there, going to the lab and, uh, water treatment. Uh, the reason for us asking for extra operators in this area is that we only currently right now have one person working that whole plant at night shift. We have one thing. And we do have, we do have issues, more people can call in, but I need two people. But stairs, elevators, that plant is big. If I have one person that calls over and hits their head, I have no way of telling, no way of hearing what's going on. I tell over there to shoot. So, uh, we really do need more operators for that plant. Uh, and what did it do? It's like that they are aging. We have a very old, um, water treatment structure. Uh, we're really wanting current projects from them, so we do have the water treatment plant rehabilitated. So apparently they are on ninety percent pay application, which means pay application plus minus retention is the stuff that we are keeping, or eighty-eight percent. On the construction of the water treatment plant, we are at eighty percent. I can almost say at the treatment plant where it is. There are other aspects that are outside of the plant that they have incorporated into this project. Collection meters in our sewer just from the data at the water treatment plant. Certain other aspects that will help our whole time sewer infrastructure that was incorporated in this project. So when I say the project is eighty percent construction complete, and has a water treatment plant, we're eighty percent. I do think that we are going to push the construction of that plant when we can be finished into June or July. That will, we will be able to turn everything on, hopefully have everything running, everything, bugs are fixed, all sorts of things. Start up commissioning, all filters are good, all lights are running. Anything that should be running should be able to happen. Now, on the backside of that, that does mean that we will have other things. We could talk to the Derrington, State of the Collection System that will run further than June or July. I would say probably doesn't happen. So, but that still doesn't mean that we will be fully operational in June or July. Without alarming any other issues or disorders, problems that have been run into, that's. But like Mr. Wilson asked me to explain earlier, that's a lot of the pay applications to our finances because our construction materials have been delivered, a lot of the construction, the bulk of the pay application was in construction of the plant and not necessarily startup. It is going to take three months, three to four months to start up and commission all lights. Anything that is stated that's going into the system, anything to that measure, that's probably the large portion of what is going to take the longest time from here to starting.
So it will not be a danger?
It will. I do not believe that it will be happening. Uh, the UConn compensation, uh, that I've already spoken about, uh, is currently going on right now too. So we're making strategy. That's going to be very helpful for the Northside. Uh, it pushes all that water to, uh, Rainbow Tower, so that it will help with stores or portion of it. Uh, and then in front of all that, we do have some small things that we're looking at adding that was not included into the, uh, treatment plant rehab, just some backwash valves, uh, actuators, and certain things like that. Filters and then coordinators, you know, like that. Those are current projects. Uh, future replacements and rehabs. Uh, currently, um, I've spoken with our, uh, plant manager there. And one of the, hmm, one of our main things is that within our clear wells, we have three clear wells. We are only able to use about fifty to sixty percent capacity. So hypothetically, if they're a long break, and we are losing water. We are only able, we have to shut down our pumps at fifty percent. So the clear wells are anywhere fifteen, sixteen feet between the three of them. So that's about, you do about eight and a half feet of water in clear wells, which comes out to about three and a half to four million extra gallons that we're not able to attach. Now, we, we can still use that on a day-to-day basis. The issue is, is that the pumps, when it gets to that level in those clear wells, it starts affecting the pumps. So cavities of pumps and that. So we're looking at changing or doing a pump assessment to see if we can use vertical turbine pumps within our pump station to access more. That will give us the ability to during a line break, if we're able to use the rest of the eight or nine feet, uh, have to give us four or five more hours to give our team, the field, our harder distribution team time to access the valves, close it, figure out a way, uh, to shut in anything that can be used before the down. If you have to shut it down or anything like that. So this is a big, a big project that we really need to look into that was not incorporated. Uh, also not incorporated into the rehab is one of our settling, settling basin is older. It was not put into this rehab. Uh, the vision and plan for this plant is to have three different, um, settling basins, which gives us the opportunity to run two at the same time in the summer. We currently right now can run one, right, if there's, uh, the daily manner now about eighteen million. One plant can do about twenty, twenty-five million when you turn both on. Uh, you can pretty much provide anything in summer, but it also gives us, we're able to add a third plant. It will be able to shut one of them down in the summer time, clean that, get everything fixed up and go. It is going to cost the city quite a bit of money to do that, uh, to not add an extra basin. But we will at least have to replace the current, one of the basins that we're not cooperating on. Uh, there's also a pump, at the older pump station inside the water treatment that was not, uh, replaced, but we're waiting on that to figure out in the assessment, uh, or if it's going to be. Uh, and then you have backwash valves, uh, humidity meters. I know we're working on a UConn pump station right now, but we're not replacing any pumps. We aren't adding a board pump, but one of those pumps does need to be replaced, uh, very shortly. So that's another future that we can have replaced. And currently right now, this is the big one is, is vision. None of our facilities technically have any master plans. So that means right now I'm working with Corolla to design for our water treatment plant to get a facility master plan for that reason. So it's going to give us, in the next five years, we have to do settling basin, pump assessment, whatever it is. And then from there, we can do our, what's, what's a team, what's a twenty, what's a group, we need to add offices. Uh, the vision from the department and from myself is that there's a possibility in twenty to thirty years needing a second water treatment. Now, does our current treatment facility work and could it produce fifty-five million when it is done? Absolutely. The issue that you have is pressures in certain areas. Uh, plus, if we have to provide fifty million gallons to a city, will our distribution lines hold it? Now, I know that's a long way down the road. Um, I know that there are things that we can do, do fight and chew, um, to get us there. But I do think that in this plan, uh, I am and would like to look at adding a second treatment facility, even, even if it's half of what it is, and put it on the east side. So I have, of course, the little, we are working to get it on. So I have talked with Perillo, we are working to get out of the water, it's something we have a person, so, uh, so we don't have a facility, we have distribution employed, and that will, that'll include pump stations, those towers, anything not happening to that. Uh, any question on that?
We have a question, but pretty good math, and you're telling me in three to five years, we need to grow fifteen million dollars? Four things based on current, based on our construction plant, you ever seen a long ago, but what's the picture?
Yes, sir, so that, that is if we want to go to, to three basins now, we could, we could just stay where we're at and keep two, um, and then just take one down and it costs about twenty million, uh, the front room will be smaller. Uh, but it's, it's a, it's a vision and a plan that we have for the water treatment plant, to make sure that we're able to shut things down, if we do have a problem, still be able to, uh, provide water to the citizens. If they can save one zone based on wasn't able to, we would have a very hard time to ensure that we can provide enough clean water. We have reservoirs at a hundred and sixty million gallons across the street that we can tap into, it's just going to clean it fast enough to get it out. Now, we have to put a load all around the city, we have a pump station, one that, uh, built it, have a large treatment plant, um, but they have to be able to, if one goes down, just now, we have a way to heat water.
I just think we are the council of your cities and the next council, kind of pay attention to that, maybe the rat, the national plan will do that, but if you can just wait till it's ready, then.
Yes, sir.
The cost could change in that construction, I mean, after a couple of years, I, I.
Yeah, yes, sir, it would be, I mean, if you're running out over three years, it depends, you know, probably pushing three and a half or four, so, and that's a large one, this or small, so you could probably do one side of this in a year or. The, the idea from a utility division standpoint is to prepare for the year. I can't just only sit here and say, we're going to fix what we can right now, so for, for me, I, I, there's my kids, there's kids after us, there's people that we have to make sure that when we're in our department, we have to look, wait for, this is why we're, we're going to spend the money now, because we don't, we're, that's.
Will that be in the, I should.
Yes, sir, so that, those are regular, those sound, maybe we'll be in, that, that's, we, we have to do it. Any other question?
Uh, someone here asked that, this one, yes, sir, a part, a year ago or so, um, we were looking at exercising the valve, to be able to isolate them, right, to be planted.
Yes, sir.
One of them, it's, they're both, they're only, uh, running, exercising the valve, so we want to pull in, affect some sort of person, make sure they weren't breaking, they were actually, he's been hoping they were good.
Yes, so we'll get to that, go ahead. Okay, I'm going to jump ahead here to, yeah, okay, so our distribution, we're currently five thousand five hundred and sixty-three valves done out of thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-two. So we're, we're currently working on that, apparently they found, uh, a hundred and twenty-four valves closed for no reason. Uh, now that is only if we, if there is a map further on, I'll show you the valves that we have, it's a little further, uh, and we will get there, but we'll, we'll show everything, but we are making things good for the city. Uh, issues and solutions, some of the issues that we're having is the current staff is reaching retirement age at the water treatment plant, uh, and then one of our major issues, this is across the board for the utilities exploding operator position. We're only allocated, you know, four A licenses, three B licenses, four C licenses, so then maybe somebody in the A position, the power splits, does something, I have to fill that position with an A, but nobody has it, unless somebody below them decides I want to, you know, test them, but it takes time, and people, and you don't have people, you, you don't have many people with an A license applying for that position. Full fill, or it's a very technical position, with a water treatment plant, so, uh, we're asking to kind of change that when it's an A position and quick, and we drop it down to a D, so then I can hire a D and then train people as we do. Uh, currently, right now, across my business, across my department, we don't have, so we need to get that changed, so.
So certification, is that state level?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. At our water plant, we have four A licenses, which is uncertain.
Yes, they require. So it's a state, or a state, or a state, or we're going to, are we going to get a fine, are we going to get?
No, because we at least, we only have to have one A operator running the plant at, at that time, so as long as I have one A operator, we're all. Yes, sir, yes, sir, absolutely.
We do have program, you see, you have each day.
Yes, sir, it's, yes, sir, we have training, travels, seminars, anything like that, we pay, the city pays for it, it's just, it's all our, it's hard to get those guys to get a higher person and, you know.
We have four days right now?
Yes, incredible.
That, that is incredible, but hard to find across the state, and, and.
I do a lot of, I do work in. It is, it's, absolutely. Okay, let's move on to our lab services, this one should be a lot quicker than the other ones. Uh, our lab service division holds a lot of role in maintaining our water and wastewater plants in compliance with the P C P. So I also facilitate testing within our infrastructure to ensure reports are submitted to necessarily, necessary regulatory agents. We prepare chemicals for both plants for their onsite testing, considerable Odessa water and wastewater treatment plants, and our contract customer uses the data generator by our lab services to make treatments that have human and environmental health. To determine if their plant meets the C C P requirement, to evaluate my performance, and to determine if facilities improvements are necessary. We maintain national environmental laboratory accreditation program, uh, and, which is required to perform C C P compliance, drinking water and wastewater testing. For the state, that's what they are contracting us, we are assessed by C C P.
So Alex, with, those lab services, do we provide services to, not just?
Not just, uh, so we are an accredited lab, so people, marine and air stuff, we're the only accredited lab within quite a large area, maybe five hours, uh, that can handle, uh, drinking water. So we are credited for that drinking water, um, people bring us their labs, we tell them yes or no, and.
We serve the city?
Yes, sir. Other cities, they, they're on, uh, Garden Dale right now, we're working, yeah, we're moving away. Yes, so, and so we actually do bring revenue in from the lab, uh, they make their own money, uh, so, uh, that is what happens out of that. Uh, this is some of just the small projects that's there, we don't have anything, you know, any outstanding, it's not a major, uh, deal, but we, we do have some stuff coming up that, I think, is small. Uh, issues and solutions, uh, just little things, uh, we are an accredited lab, so it's very hard to keep people, uh, and plus you got to have a chemist, or a degree, and certain things like that, to come into that, to run the big roles there, as far as to keep those people. Uh, I do know that it pays a lot more, uh, their lab than our lab, uh, so we're just counting, I know I do have one, uh, label to be able to be involved with samples, and, you know, so it's very long. And then, uh, floating operator, we need to, you lose a high chemist, and as far as I need that position to go down, for the B, higher than, worth of the major, uh, degrees and certain things, which will, for that to last. Uh, future needs, we just need to add a chemist position, um, and we do have some things that are going to come up, I mean, uh, purchase needs for the lab, I have a whole lot of people cabinets and things like that, they, they weren't, uh, out, the money wasn't obligated for certain thing, uh, you know, previous account issue. There's just some things there that we need to, but the lab is fairly, fairly efficient. Water distribution and sewer reflection, this is one of our fantastic. Uh, one of our purposes of this division is to deliver water to residents with the highest possible quality, quantity, and pressure at all times. We also maintain water pressure and fire height, to the use of our reactors. We work to supply the necessary volumes of water and firefighting, minor repairs, and shots to minimize the number of customers affected. In addition, we maintain the sewer lines and make repairs as needed. This division currently oversees seven hundred and fifty-three miles of water, water lines, and five hundred seventy-four sewer lines. This division is also responsible for utility job order contract, where we plan, design, all replacement waters and wastewater lines that are less than two thousand linear feet. Fire fighter replacements, the installation of water and wastewater after citizens, and where to monitor the water. Those are very hard to make in season low, um, these are the fundamentals, uh, I do need more. I need quite a bit, I know, which is what we're asking a lot of time, um, I, I don't know how quickly we can build it, uh, to pay it low, and that's kind of what we, we'll find out there. These guys are probably out of my division, one of the hardest working people, and they're out there and they're all watching, buying on line trucks, issuing on breaks, these guys are working way more hours a day, so it's Saturday. This is where, uh, which we can know, kind of, the future needs, uh, we do need a valve exerciser, uh, this will be for our valves, uh, we do have a valve truck, uh, I'm looking to possibly purchase another truck, specifically with these two operators. I pay the nothing, I'll go around and check our thirteen thousand valves listed currently, and with this new M P O implementation that we've been moving across the city, when it comes to the utilities department, to be able to get in there and knock it out, we'll be able to see exactly what we need to do, when it was hit in the last, it was in July, well, twenty twenty-four, we'll hit it again next year, that's the same thing, that's, if we did that. And then same thing with the sewer line maintenance crew, we have not had sewer line maintenance crew in, uh, fifteen plus years, uh, so that means some of these lines that we're hitting, or not hitting, are immune to sludge, issues related to us, or things like that. So we do need to look into adding two of those people.
So if you say, like, on the valves, and you need a new truck, is that specific truck?
Yes, sir, it is a specific truck, so it's going to be like a three-quarter ton or one ton, um, and it's got a valve here, uh, on.
How long do I have to, how much longer, or are you just, we don't take one, I don't want, I don't want to have cold foods.
I got a little bit, I do have, I do have a little bit of you.
Just a little, now, now, for a quick, please, ask, ask your break a lot, I think.
Thanks, sir.
Quite good, honey, because she's, her, her baby, she'll be able to have, yes. I, I actually don't have, I don't know what it is, so.